Good evening, Yorktown, and welcome to the Town Board Work Session for September 8th, 2020. If everyone can be right and coming to the
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Right, and if you could please join me in the most silent speak as we remember those lost on September 11th and those we've lost since September 11th due to 9/11.
I don't know. It's not recording.
Hey, Maura.
Thank you. Yeah, Maura, you got, if you can just go on your
Yeah, um.
You want?
I was waiting for it to get juicy.
Yeah. Uh, if you, Maura, if you hit, go to the bottom, you can hit record. All right, uh, request the permission and where I can try to do it. Sorry, folks. We're just trying to work out a technical difficulty here. I've Maura, did you hit request? No, I don't see it. I did not get any, uh.
Chief, thank you for that email. I got it. We can read your lips, Maura. We heard, we read your lips, what you said.
Just gonna, two seconds here, Maura, I'm gonna come in and see if we can fix this.
Yeah, technical difficulties.
That's all. Yeah, it happens.
That's all.
Many mismatched devices, you know?
Okay, let's see if this works. Okay, we are recording, and as a reminder, this is a great time to remind everyone that, uh, the governor did, Governor Cuomo did extend the executive order allowing for virtual meetings, uh, through, uh, I believe it's October 6th. Uh, and as one of the requirements to have virtual meetings, we must make sure they're being recorded. Um, we are joined tonight. Again, my name is Matt Slater, town supervisor, joined by Councilman Ed Lachman, Councilman Tom Diana, Councilwoman Alice Roker, and we have on the phone with us Councilman Vishnu Patel, uh, Russell, joined by our town attorney, Adam Rodriguez, and Chief of Police, Bob Noble. Before we begin our agenda, I just had a few quick announcements I did want to share with the public. Uh, first and foremost, 9/11 coming up on Friday. Uh, we have the town-sponsored 9/11 ceremony at 4:30 at the 9/11 memorial located next to the John C. Hart Library. Masks are required if you plan on attending in person. We will also be streaming it on our Facebook page, uh, and there will also be a virtual 9/11 ceremony that was put together by our town clerk, Diana Quas, by Councilwoman Alice Roker, and the best TV producer in the back of the room, Tommy Cangella. Uh, and that will be released on both the town's government access channel, uh, and the website on 9/11. Um, in addition to the 4:30 9/11 ceremony, we are going to have a special ceremony, uh, as well. And I want to thank Andrew Gamosier for his incredible generosity. Uh, we're going to be having an illumination ceremony, uh, up at Granite Knolls. It's an illumination ceremony and also a memorial service for New York City Police Detective Michael Houlihan. Uh, Detective Houlihan, uh, was a longtime resident of the town of Yorktown. Unfortunately, Detective Houlihan passed away, uh, earlier this year due to 9/11-related illness. And dur- during the time in which he passed, unfortunately, he was not, his family was not allowed, uh, a proper funeral. And so, it being on 9/11, um, we will be remembering Detective Houlihan, uh, and we invite the public to join us. The program will begin at 8:00 PM up at Granite Knolls, uh, and we'll remember one of New York's finest and a great member of our community. Uh, and again, want to thank the Houlihan family, especially his brother Tom, uh, for, for reaching out and, and getting this on my, on my radar. And I know Chief Noble's a, a good family friend as well, and we're looking forward to giving Detective Houlihan the send-off that he so deserves. And so, again, the public is welcome to join. Masks must be worn. It'll be up at Granite Knolls. And we will be also shining, again, thank you to Andrew Gamosier, um, two, well, it's more than two, uh, but we'll be shining uh, twin tower-like lights, similar to what they have downtown. Um, we'll be displaying those, uh, from roughly 8:30 PM, uh, until 10:00 PM, 10:00 PM at Granite Knolls. So it should be a very special evening, uh, an important evening uh, for such a trying time in our, in our country and state and communities' history, uh, and also remembering a brave, brave individual in Detective Houlihan.
Is there any increment whether, uh, uh, time change or anything else?
It's weather, weather obviously is a key factor. I'm knocking on wood and, and saying a few prayers. Right now, the weather looks perfectly good for Friday evening, so we shouldn't have any concerns.
I believe if it is bad weather, we have umbrellas. That is a very special day.
Correct.
Excuse me, Supervisor, just one other one is the, uh, Jefferson Valley, uh, Fire Department is also having their, I'm sorry, the Mahegan Fire Department in there is at Jefferson Valley Firehouse at about 6 o'clock.
Perfect, perfect. You want to encourage those who have not attended the Mahegan, uh, ceremony. It is a very moving ceremony, uh, where you hear some primary accounts from some of the members of the Mahegan Fire District, uh, who responded, uh, to the attacks on 9/11, and they, and they provide those as well. Just an update on COVID, uh, today's numbers show we have 14 active cases. Again, we're seeing that roller coaster, uh, which, what we've been coming to expect, which is what the Health Department told us to expect until, um, a vaccine is widely distributed. Uh, so obviously, we're going to continue to be, um, as, as vigilant as we can, washing your hands, wearing your masks. I mean, masks are proving to be the key here, uh, and so if we can continue to adhere to those parameters, uh, we hope to get through the fall as safely as we can. Uh, we do have a few updates in regards to our facilities. The library opened today for in-person service. It will be open from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Their porch pickup process will continue, including on Thursday evenings. They also launched a new, uh, a new site on their website, uh, to help residents and patrons browse their collection and reserve for porch, uh, porch side pickup. Uh, also in the library that was installed today is their, um, uh, is there self-checkout machine? Excuse me? I was drawing a blank on what to call it. The self-checkout machine, uh, was installed today, uh, which obviously eliminates, uh, interaction. Uh, and so that was, that seems to be going very well, and I want to thank Jennifer O'Neill, our library director, for seeing its implementation. Uh, here for Town Hall and all town departments, we will begin, um, allowing in-person meetings. These have to be by request, so you have to make an appointment. Uh, you will be asked a series of COVID screening questions, as well as have a temperature check upon entering our facilities, uh, as well as being escorted to your point of meeting and escorted out of the building. We still prefer doing our work virtually if you can, uh, but if you do need the town's assistance, uh, feel free to call one of our departments, make an appointment, and we can accommodate accordingly. The Senior Nutrition Center, however, will not, will not be, uh, allowing seniors, uh, we're going to continue to service them as we have throughout the entire COVID process. Uh, we want to make sure that our most vulnerable population is protected as best we can. Uh, and so the Senior Nutrition Center will continue delivering their meals. Uh, also, the Senior Advisory Board Meeting for September has been canceled, and we will be hopefully, I'm working with the Chair, Rosemary Panio, uh, to tape a, an updated Senior, uh, Senior Advisory Committee, um, uh, meeting with some important, from some guests. Lastly, um, two more light items. Uh, we're going to be changing the hours at Town Hall starting next Tuesday. Uh, starting next Tuesday, Town Hall operation will begin at 8:00 AM and run from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We believe this is an important step to be more accommodating for our residents. Uh, we've, I've heard from our department heads, our staff, um, and, and of course, residents, um, and we feel that this will make our services more available and convenient. This way, people don't, if they have to be in work by nine, uh, aren't asked to take time off to do town business. And so that will start next Tuesday, the 15th, 15th. Our Town Hall only, Town Hall, uh, offices will begin to be open from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And the last thing I want to talk about quickly, I'm going to share my screen here. It's garbage. Can everyone see that?
Little town.
So this was on my run at 4:30 this afternoon, right at the, welcome to Yorktown Heights sign on the, on the North County Trailway. Unacceptable. I, I haven't been, honestly, we've been through a lot this year. I haven't been this angry all year. I, I just find it completely disrespectful and despicable, and I don't know, I don't care if it's a resident or a visitor. It's wrong, and you can't even see half the garbage that's behind the garbage can. I want to thank our building and maintenance staff who came out to help me clean it up, but it shouldn't have gotten that far.
Yeah.
And we really need to respect our town, respect our community, and respect each other. But this is just wrong on so many levels. And I wanted to just bring it to the public's attention, to the board's attention. Again, I want to thank our building and maintenance staff for stepping up to the plate and helping me clean it up. Uh, we, we need, we can do better. We need to do better. That's just not how we want people, especially visitors, coming into the Heights Hamlet. That's the first thing that they're going to see. And that's not the, that's not Yorktown. So I really hope that our residents respect our town and our visitors respect our town, especially on the trailway, which is a great asset that we have here, uh, in Yorktown. With that, we're going to begin our agenda. Uh, we're going to begin with New York State Executive Order 203. Uh, I want to, of course, welcome Chief Robert Noble, uh, our police chief. And this is a continuing conversation that we've had, uh, as a board since, uh, really July, when we had advocates join us, um, and discuss this process. Uh, as we said last week, we had someone speak during courtesy of the floor. Um, the, uh, the regulations promulgated by the Division of Budget have yet to be handed down by the governor's office. Uh, we've checked that multiple times. A resource, uh, resource guide was released in August. Uh, this again is a, a, a resource guide. It is not the, the promulgated regulations that we continue to wait for. Uh, included within the resource guide is a timeline. Uh, and the timeline provides a very, I think, um, flexible and good outline for us to follow. Uh, the timeline includes a, a listening and learning segment that would begin at the end of this month and go through into November, a draft of initial proposals, uh, which would be, uh, an exercise that would take place from the middle of November to the end of the year, a second public comment period, which would take place from the beginning of January through mid-February, and then a revise and ratify of the report that would be submitted to the state as is directed by Governor Cuomo's executive order. And so while we have not received those regulations, uh, we felt it was important, I felt it was important to have a conversation with the board and with the chief, uh, to see if we can begin the process of putting, uh, of putting a program together, quite frankly, and, and seeing where and how we wanted to go about doing it. So I open up to the board if there's a discussion that we had.
I'm just looking at, um, a, um, document that, uh, the chief had sent me, had sent us, um, basically bullet pointing the things that are outlined in Executive Order 203. Um, and I think that, you know, I've said it before, I'm going to say it again, our police department is, and it's right here in, in the very beginning of it, is, uh, uh, is accredited where number, um, 100, I don't know what number we are, but there's only 156 out of 530 of, of police departments that are accredited. We are one of them. And I'm very proud of that, as I'm sure the chief is also.
I think the entire
Yes, uh, it is not a, it is, it is, it is not something that's done lightly. Um, it's, it's an arduous task that is undertaken by the police, um, not only the chief, but the rank and file to put this into place. Um, and, and quite frankly, I think we need to find out exactly what has to come down on, on 203, as the supervisor said, before we can make any action. Now, that being said, let's discuss what we want to do in as far as, the discussion, the panel.
Uh, it's, it's the question, but first off, I also want to say that there is also a, a point from August through mid-September of planning. And when you read through the planning, um, points, um, the chief has really taken on a lot of these responsibilities and has done fantastic work, uh,
I didn't get that.
In preparation. I'm sorry?
I didn't get that memo.
What memo?
Did you send them something that I can get?
I, I showed you in my office back in, back when we sat down.
Okay.
I, I got a reprint, Alice.
Yeah, and I sent it, you know, Soup, you've got it. You could share it with, with anybody who needs it. Alice, if you need it again, the supervisor has it. Um, but yeah, I showed that. I, I had this done, and I rolled it out to my supervisory staff back in July. So, like I said, I prided myself on staying ahead of this thing.
And he's, and Chief, you've done just a really fantastic job in, in, in that aspect. Um, and, and so the, as far as I'm concerned, I think the planning portion from the, from the chief's standpoint, um, you know, is, is, is essentially completed, and I think it's important for us to have a discussion about the listening, uh, section, which would be Phase Two of their timeline, uh, which is, which according to the guideline is listening sessions engaging, uh, experts and requesting comments and information. So really just a, a listening tour of sort. And if we want to have the Town Board post the listening tours, uh, if we want to, again, that's where I'm looking for input from the board to see how we feel.
Okay, can I go?
Absolutely.
I'm going to, and I think I said this to you today in your office, Matt. I'll pick my, my police chief against anybody, and I know I'll come out on top. Um,
Absolutely.
Um, I believe that our police department is, you know, I've been here for a lot of years. And the one thing about the police, Yorktown Police Department that they've always done is they've done community policing, but it's not called that. It's just called that they are helping various events. They are always in the community. Um, so for, you know, so for, for the part of the guidelines that talked about, about this, I just smiled when I read him. And I, I didn't know what it was called, but we were doing it a long time ago. I think, my feeling is that I think it is important, um, to gather people and listen. And what's more important than anything is, and I know Matt and I've had this discussion, you have to filter out everything that you hear unless it pertains to Yorktown. Of course, it would be unfair.
Right.
Um, we are looking at our department, which I'm totally proud of, and, um, I don't think we're going to get in a, a letter from the governor differentiating, differentiating departments that are accredited. I think, um, I think it's important for citizens to believe that they are a part of the community. You know, when I read this document, I was really angry because people who look like me are treated unfairly. And I know that doesn't, it's not, it doesn't happen here, but it still happens. Um, and it is my belief that we can shine any light we want to on our police department, and we know it's going to, to, to illuminate that very brightly because of who they are and what they do. And, and in fact, this guidebook didn't even get to all of the things that our police department does. Um, you know, particularly when it comes to, when they talk about bad actors, um, bad actors get hired because of different, um, personnel policies. The policy that the chief has come up with is absolutely amazing. And, and I remember when I sat as supervisor for, for three months, they may not have caught someone in the beginning, but they did catch him, and when I was supervisor, we did have to fire him. Um, you will be caught because the people around you will tell, will, will, will not tell on you, but will not tolerate bad actors because that makes them look bad. Um, I think it's, 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 this, this, um, document was informative to me. Um, it made me angry and it made me sad. Um, but I think, um, we can impanel, um, some residents to look at it. And again, I know there are lots of fears that they're with, with Ferguson or Minneapolis or whatever in their minds, we're going to say, no, you got to cut that. You've got to limit what you're doing to the town of Yorktown because that's all we can do. And I know a lot of people may, this may not make a lot of people happy, but I think that in the end, we will be a better community for it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roker. Any other feedback from the board about how we want to proceed moving forward?
Uh, can I ask you something? This document, is this a public document from the governor?
Yeah, it was released.
One can see it, you know, the people have access. How they're going to find out?
Public document on the governor's website.
Oh, okay, all right. Because I wasn't sure where it was.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, it's a public document on the governor's website. Anybody can have access to it, and I agree with Councilman Roker, I think. A lot of it, when I read it, uh, a lot of the things that I saw, and, and again, these were mostly recommendations or suggestions to explore. Um, I said to myself, either A,
We do it.
We do it, or B, it doesn't apply.
Absolutely.
We're not, we're not a, a city. Uh, we're not a, you know, we don't have a, a large police force, um, and obviously, our, our town is, obviously is different than other areas where we're seeing, um, issues. And so tho- those were my initial thoughts on, on what I read. Um, but I agree with Councilwoman Roker. I have no, I have no doubt in my mind that when people learn what our police department does in detail, which I think is what part of this exercise really is, they're going to be flawed. They're going to be just blown away by the great job that our chief and our police department do on a daily basis and, and how advanced they already are and, and ahead of the curve they already are. That's what I think we're going to see out of this. It's more of a process standpoint from my, from, from where I am. Um, obviously, as the chief elected officer for the town, according to the executive order, we have to, I have to convene some type of body, whether that's the Town Board or, or, or some other panel that we put together. And so, again, I'm looking for feedback from the board or the chief, uh, as to how we want to engage in that, in that process. Because I think it, right now, even though we don't have the executive orders, I think we can begin with the, at least planning on the listening tour, uh, and gathering that commentary. Uh, and then if we get the executive order, I mean, the, the regulations pertaining to the executive order handed down, we're not too far down the road, uh, that we can pivot and address what we need to. Councilman Diana?
Yeah, if, if I may, um, I think an advisory panel that would report to the Town Board, and then we would report to the chief would probably be the way to go.
Well, he's a part of the panel.
He's a part of the, the two, the two that the, that the governor speci- specifically identified as members would be myself and the chief. So the chief and I would already be on the panel. Again, whether that panel is just the Town Board members or we go beyond that, that's what we're trying to deliberate on.
No matter how you look at it, we're still going to be the governing body.
Yeah, exactly.
On, on, on whatever happens, and
The Town Board has to ratify the, whatever, if there, if there are recommendations that, that are put forward, um, as part of the draft proposal, it's the Town Board that ultimately revises and ratifies whatever that proposal is, and then sends it to the governor's office as part of his executive order.
You know, um, they've got money associated with this order.
Yeah, so the governor has threatened to withhold state fund.
Give us money.
Will he give us money for, no, he's, it's the other way around. If you don't comply, I wish he would give us money. He just took, not he, the state just took $280,000 back, um, as of last week. Uh, so it's the other way around. If you don't comply, then you're going to lose more state funding. At this point, the only state funding that, that we take, uh, really is the CHIPS money, uh, which is about $400,000, uh, for paving. Um, beyond that, most of the state funding, they've already taken back from us. So that's what we're, that's what we're looking at.
Well, you know, the interesting part is depending what, what we come up with, it might require some dollars.
Well, implementation, could. I, I, yeah, I mean, if you read some of the suggestions that they put in their guidebook, I mean, some of those things I read as creating an entirely new department on a municipal level, which I don't think is,
You can't do that.
You can't do it. Not feasible. And, and so, uh, yeah, if, you know, if you're going to implement every one of the things that are in, in, in the guidebook, it's going to cost significant dollars, which right now I can say definitively, we do not have. Um, but that's, again, that's further down the road. That's further down in the process. The, the, the first step in the, well, the second step in the process is a listening tour and, and, or listening, listening sessions, uh, so that we can begin to collate and collect if there are issues that need to be addressed and, and also things that people, I think, need to be educated on about how the police, how it actually works from the police's standpoint, which is why I'm very happy that the chief is on the panel, because I think a lot of this is going to become more of an education exercise when people, again, see what they already do. I, I'm going to be, I think they're going to be much more, feel much more safe living in the town and proud to live in this.
You know, if you use last week as an example, um, with, with, um, what is it? Hope Not Handcuffs? Is that, was that the title?
Hope Not Handcuffs, correct.
Um, that is, that talks to poor chiefess. I'm sorry, I'm, I gotta do it. Um, it talks to, um, he, it's not like he went out there and, 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 or she came in here and said, oh, come on, can we do it in Yorktown? He went to her, and this requires additional work on his department's, um, time.
And community engagement.
Yes, and, and that's why I want, I want the community to understand who they are, you know, and as I read through the book, I can tell you, I have called the police, um, I had once had a flood in my basement, and I didn't know what to do, so I called the police, and they came, um, um, but that is, um, obviously, that's, that, that people may consider that dumb. I don't. I think that we were talking earlier today that while we may be a big town, we're really small.
Hmm.
We're really small. Um,
Things they love about us the most.
Yeah.
It falls for service just like that, Alice, that separates a, a, an okay police department to a wonderful police department, because those are the calls that are interpersonal. Those are the ones Because those are the calls that are interpersonal. Those are the ones that you get to meet. Right. And these are where, and, and I'm going to use the, the, the phrase community leasing comes into effect. The cop says, he gets there, he goes, oh, well, I don't have my garden hose with me, but we'll get the fire department here right away. We'll see what we can do for you.
I'm gonna have to pump. You have to pump.
Um, but, y- you know, a- and, and that being said. You know, I think. If there's going to be any panel which both you, you supervisor and chief are going to be on, that possibly. The people that we enlist in that panel. Bring things, of course, forward to the town board, but they may want to enlist. The longstanding. Um, organizations in this town such as. The Lions, the Elks, the, uh, Ask, drug crisis in your backyard, so on and so forth. That will bring credence to our police department who has worked with all of these folks. So, uh, so diligently and, and. To the folks that know what the town of Yorktown has to offer and, and. I don't know, that's just, that's just my two cents. I, I, you know, I, I don't think we need to, um. Go much further than the organizations that we already have established in town. If we have to that way.
I'm going to respectfully disagree because, you know, Tom, Tommy, you want, you want that circle of people who knows him. Who knows his man, men to be much broader than what it is today. And those people and the Lions and Rotary and whatever, they know him because he's there. Um, I think that we want to. I don't know, I, I, you know. I don't know. I, I think we, we, we need to broaden out because I think people actually, as I went through that guidebook. I said, okay, the chief could talk, the chief will talk, no, mm-mm, I already do that, mm-hmm, I do that. Uh, I think that. It needs to be a broader audience that will listen to it because if you get the same tried and true people. People on the outside are going to say, yeah, they brought their friends and that's how they got, they, they did this. I want as many people to know who he is and what his department is. As I know about his department.
I, I think you'll get there. I know Councilman Lachman wanted to chime in, but I think you'll get there by. Going through the process. Of both the listening, the listening section, but also the public comment section. Um, and that's why I think it's going to be a very useful educational experience for a lot of people in our town. Councilman Lachman?
Yeah, so you know what, Matt, you actually just sort of hit on the point I wanted to, to, to drift to, so to speak. Uh, you know, we already have a panel that's supposed to work with the police. It's, uh, the Board of Commissioners. Uh, which is actually the town board. Uh, I like the idea of, uh. Sort of what you were doing with Senator Murphy, where, where they were going around and having the hearings for the opioid addictions. Where people are given that opportunity to come in to speak. But I think that, Alice, you hiding from me behind that paper?
No, I would, I, I, I'm just going to refer you to page in the, in the order, which is page 120.
So, so I think I, and, and I don't have that, so I have to take a look at that, but, uh. You know, I, I think that, you know, having, having those, similar to those hearings that were held. And having people be able to talk and as well as our police department doing a presentation. On what is involved with everything they have for their certification. But, so.
I think it's a learning on both parts.
That's one of the things, I'm sorry, Councilman, that's one of the things, you know, that I'm, I'm. Hopeful that we're going to be able to accomplish and, uh, and I do have that experience from doing it, you know, for the state legislature. You know, put, putting these types of roundtables or hearings together, and I'm happy to do it, you know, for our town. But I think it's also important to understand. From the board's perspective. Who, you know, who's going to be receiving those comments? And I think that's one of the things we're trying to discuss here. Councilman Diana, you were saying?
Yeah, it's going to come back. No matter how you look at it, it's going to come back to us as the legislative board to give to the chief on, on what's going on. Um, and, and. Because we are the Board of, of, I said, Fire Commissioners, it's the Board of Police Commissioners. Um, and, yeah, I don't know how that came out, but, um.
Put out a lot of fires, Tommy.
Yeah, we've done that from time to time, but, uh. You know, we, we, we are, we are the Board of, of Police Commissioners and, and, uh. You know, we already were born in place to hear, uh, you know, a, a, a listening tour or so on and so forth is always helpful, I'm sure, to anybody, but. No matter how you look at it, it's going to come back and fall on our laps.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, but I, I guess I'm, I'm referring to the Governor's Boarders, which talks about. The fact that Matt will convene as head of, and the chief. And stakeholders in the community will work to develop a plan. I think that. The town board and its listening tour will not do what that, that says to do. I think that, um. There, you know, I don't understand, uh, why. I think there are stakeholders, in fact, every person who lives in Yorktown is a stakeholder. I think it's important for the community, um. Like I said, who may not have known, who may not know Bob Noble and, and his police officers, because I think they, they come together. Um. I want them to know him. I want them to know the police officers that, that are there. Um, you know. I, I was reading something about the SROs. We have a totally different. SRO thing in Yorktown. Um, it, it. I am, I am proud and like I said, I'm, I'm willing to put my guy up against. Anybody and say. He himself, you know, they do a good job. But maybe we discover, they discover something during the process. Um, I don't, I don't. I don't feel, I think that. The town board is not the appropriate agency. I think the residents, some residents have. Have a hesitancy to coming before the board. Um. I don't think that they will have a hesitancy coming before a resident. And I know I've heard people say, are you gonna handpick your political friends? And I said, I'm not, I wouldn't do that. Um, I don't have to do that. I am not frightened, um.
I, you know, if I may, I think it's a, maybe possibly a balance of the two. I think it's important to have people who are frankly. Standards of the community, uh, people who have been in this community, people who understand the community, the community. Um, I think it's balanced with folks that you're talking about, Councilwoman, people who. You would like to see get the exposure of interacting with our chief and our police department. But I also, I. I also think though that they have an avenue of doing that during this process. They're going to be able to do that by participating in that process. They're going to be able to go to every listening session we have. They're going to be able to go to every public comment session we have. They're going to have, they're going to be a part of the process. Uh, and they're going to hear from our police department and our police chief, and they're going to get the answers to those questions. That I know are going to be posed during the process. Just going back to page 120 and the, and the paragraph that you described, I just. Just wanted to reiterate, and it says that we shall consider the following. It lists a whole bunch of things, right? Very last thing. And the standards promulgated by the New York State Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. Which are chief 110 standards that you've already complied with since 1993. Correct? 91, excuse me. I don't want to shortchange you two years.
That's right.
So, but I, I, but I, so I, I think there's a, I think there's a very useful avenue here for us to, um, engage. Uh, the residents, uh, engage stakeholders, which I agree with Councilwoman Roker. I think every resident is a stakeholder in a sense. Because they, the, the police serve all of them and we serve all of them as well. Um, I think it would be great if we could come back. In, uh, at our next work session with some possibilities, um, of, of, you know, spend more time to think this through. And hopefully come back. With some suggestions of individuals, um, that fit, that, you know. Again, and, and I think it's also important for whoever we have on the panel to be objective. To your point, Councilman Roker, it's. The four walls of Yorktown.
Right.
We're talking about. We're not talking about the national scene. We're not talking about national politics. We, our charge. Is to examine.
Our police.
Four walls of Yorktown and the criteria that the Yorktown Police Department work under. And I think it's important that individuals who are going to be receiving the comments. Are able to be objective with those comments.
I agree.
Look at it as, as it through the, through the scope that we are asking them to look, look at, look through it. Um. I, I'm sorry?
Ultimately, it, ultimately, like Tommy said, it comes back to us. So if they're not objective, we're going to be objective.
Correct.
Um.
I agree with that. Ultimately, the entire board is the one that's got to ratify. But what we're going to be sending to the state government. So I think we can try to come back in the next work session with, um. Some suggestions. And also a timeline for the listening tour, uh, you know, working obviously with the chief. Um, I know that he's got a couple of ideas, you know, of how he wants, how, you know, he thinks that we might be able to go about accomplishing this. Obviously, it's going to be challenging because we're going to be in the virtual world still. Uh, so it's not like I can invite, uh, a whole room of, as much as I'm dying.
It's horrible.
I can invite a whole room of people to town hall, uh, so these will be done virtually, uh, for the time being at least. Um, but I think that, that's, you know, maybe we can spend some time in the next week. Adjusting and come back.
Do you still have neighborhood associations, Bob?
Um, well, if any neighborhood association, you know, would like us to call and, and come by and speak with them. We'd be more than willing to do so, but you know, right now, a lot of things are done, communications are done via email or, or online from different residents. So, um, you know, not, not, not really, not so much. I would think the people we hear the most from sometimes are over in the village. Um, but, um, not so much condo associations or, or anything like that.
When I first moved here, that was really a wonderful thing because we had a neighborhood association. And I, I think that out of this may come more neighborhood associations.
Well, listen, I've certainly got, I've certainly got the team to do something like that. If people, if people want to, want to get that cranking again, I mean, I definitely have the talent to, to, to make it happen.
Yep, you do, I know.
Is that the old neighborhood watch? Is that what you're kind of talking about, Alice?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, now we, now we do a community camera program. And we're also looking to jump in with the Ring Neighborhood. I got Richie Finn working on that.
Awesome.
Oh, I've heard of those. Everybody has the Ring Camera. You'll.
Yeah, I, I, I gotta say, I think once people realize what this community police department is about, they're going to find. No shortcomings in it. That is my, my opinion personally, okay? The, the, the. We have to look in the four walls of the town of Yorktown. We can't go, we can't go globally. Oh, and, and this is, this is part of the problem. No, no, no. And I'm sure Bob doesn't either, that's for sure. Um. But they're, they're going to find little to none that they can really complain about our police department as far as I'm concerned. I may be a bit. I may be a bit prejudiced, but, uh, when it comes to, to the cops, uh, and I think everybody knows why. And Alice, probably you too, because your dad was a cop.
Yes, yes, and so I am, I am prejudiced about it and, and.
Yeah.
But I have had things happen to me, um, that, that, you know, unfortunately. Bobby wasn't around when I was a kid growing up and.
Right.
Had he been there, um, I would have felt a lot, a lot better because of something that happened when I was a kid.
And that coming from you is a rave, you know, I mean, it really is. And, and it's, and it's a, and it's a bolster to the police department in so many ways. Um, because, um, it's just, like you say, if, if things were different back, back in that day. Things would be different now, maybe. Um, but. I think our police department has a real handle on all of this stuff, not to go outside the four walls of the town of Yorktown. They're the best.
Why don't we leave it at this? What, the, if the town board wants to, uh, you know, over the next week. Have suggestions for, for Chief Noble and I. Uh, by all means, send them our way or give us a call, uh, with the ideas or recommendations. And then in, uh, at the next work session, hopefully we can come together with a more definitive. Uh, timeline to begin the listening session, uh, in, in that manner.
Can I talk to Bob? What, what's your feeling, Robert?
All right, uh, thank you for asking. And, um, listen, I'm, I'm ready to listen and learn tomorrow. I don't have an issue. I don't duck anybody. I'll get up and, and listen to anybody who doesn't have an agenda. You know what? If it's, if it's honest and it's, and it's sincere, you know, you will get, you know, like I said, that's, that's, I'm all about trying to make that happen. Um, I, I will be honest, um, I'm very leery of any type of board other than, other than you folks as, as police commissioners. I'm going to wait and see how that turns out and, uh, wait and see what, what draft you put together as to, as to how that's going to work, but, um. You know, it, it's, you know, um. Till I see, till I see what you have in mind, you know, I'm not, I'm not in favor of it. Um, I think my agency, like I said, what we've done, and I know while I've been, uh, your chief for, for the last four years. Um, you know, I'm proud of, of the product that, that, that we put forth. I'm proud of the officers that we've hired during that time and the officers who've been with us for several, many years. They continue to work at a high level and they treat the public. In, in just an exemplary manner. Um, so, you know, again, I just feel like, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, this agency, um. You know, we're kind of getting lumped in and, um, you know, I'm all about, uh, you know, the transparency aspect of it. And like I said, that's why I like the listening, you know, to listen and learn. I mean, I, you know, like I said, if people have questions and they're sincere and honest. Hey, if I can, if I can answer those questions for you, let's, let's do it, but, um. You know, uh, I, this agency, Yorktown Police Department, um, I just. I, I, you know, the data is there and, 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 and the work, the work product is there that, you know, if you're going to talk oversight, uh, you know, I'm. You're going to have to really have some discussions with me offline about that.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's what we're saying. I, I think what we're saying, I think what we're trying to say is. For us to engage in, in the process.
I'm all about engaging, absolutely.
That we're being charged with. Yeah, that we're being charged with though. Uh. I, to, with, with the, I think what the board's saying is that we have. An opportunity in a sense to, to broaden that engagement, I think is what Councilman Roker was getting at. Um. And we have a number of fantastic people in the community. We have people who, who are new to the community. Uh, we have organizations that are, that we built this community on in a sense that, you know, could be great assets in that process too. And, and so. But the whole point is, what I'm trying to get at is, I don't think anyone's talking about an oversight board. The, the board is the.
Yeah, no.
This panel is supposed to be just accepting. The, the commentary. Uh, that we will be hearing from the public. And, and that's their charge. Beyond that. I don't, no, I don't think anyone on the board right now. Period is having a conversation about an oversight board. I don't think that.
Absolutely not.
Discussion whatsoever.
No, that, that was nothing, um, in my brain.
Oh, okay.
And Robert and, and it is, I would have had the same response. Because knowing, knowing I have, if I were you, knowing you have a good agency. And now you're saying. I'm going to get people picking us apart. No. And, and I think what we said and what we mean is we're Yorktown.
Right.
And if you have an agenda.
Yeah, this isn't, we're not here to debate what's happening nationally.
No, I know, and, and, you know, Councilman Roker, you brought up, you know, SROs. And. You know, that's, that's something that maybe I can, I can answer as part of the listening and learning. It's like, a lot of people think those, those SROs are there to build relationships. They don't make arrests. They don't.
Right.
They're not involved in discipline. We have an agreement with both school districts. It's a state, state mandate actually that. The police are not involved in school discipline. We're there for safety, number one, and. And in this community, you have districts that are smart enough to have these cops in schools. Elementary schools where you're now changing the narrative, where you're allowing children at a very young age. At a formative age. To develop their own thought process of who and what the police are. And it's now going to be built upon personal experiences with police officers at a very young age, and you transition to middle school, you transition to high school. So, you know, i- if somebody's going to bring that up, I mean, that's just, you're doing such a detriment, such a detriment. To our community and globally by taking. Just personable and, and excellent, resourceful police officers. Out of your schools where they're building positive relationships every day. Why would you? You know, that was the, that was the wisdom of this board was. You know, that was the, that was the wisdom of this board was to, you know, listen. When I pitched, when, when, you know, Dr. Stone and I pitched the, the Lakeland and, and you guys were all, you got it. I mean, you were on board. And I think you, you, if you were to ask any principal in either of those, any of those schools, I think they'd fight you. If you wanted to, you know, take those, take those officers out. Uh, that's, that's the feedback I've, I've received.
A hundred percent. And I'm, and I was with, uh, I was with Dr. Lyons, Mike Daley and Denise Ness. And, and Mike, uh, Daley and Denise Ness, who are the president and vice president of the Lakeland School Board, had nothing but rave reviews. About the SRO program, uh, in, 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 in the impact it's had on Lakeland School District.
I couldn't believe what I was reading when I read in that booklet. And I said, but that's not what we do.
Exactly.
Right. You know, and, and that is why I've said that. Really, it really, the chief, a lot of this is going to be dependent on you. Um, in terms of what you do. Um, because when I read it and I said, well, that's not how we run our SRO program. That's not at all how we run our program.
And, you know, so the, and, and, and the documents that you're all talking about, that's, I took that executive order and broke it down. Line by line, edict by edict from Governor Cuomo. And like I said, what applied to us, and I was generous. I didn't just say, oh, that doesn't apply to us. I looked at it to say, what could potentially apply to us? And maybe with this listening tour, maybe there is something that may, but I think I took a pretty hard and, and, and broad look. And like I said, uh, you know, I think the answers, the answers are there and we're, we're moving towards. Other answers where we may be able to improve, you know, as well. So, like I said, uh, being an accredited agency, having policies and procedures in place. Having very, uh, you know, excellent personnel, um, you know, it, it shouldn't be a heavy lift, you know, unless people have an agenda and want to. You know, crawl into, crawl into weeds and I, I don't go there with people.
Which is why you're reemphasizing again, it's about being objective and about focusing on the four walls of Yorktown. And, and I think that's got to be the criteria for, uh, any individual who's going to be on the committee, which again. Would only receive the input from the public, not act anything more beyond that. That is their, that would be their, their, uh, their task. Not asking beyond that. And, and I think that's important for the board to recognize and understand for the chief, for you to recognize and understand. But also for the public to recognize and understand.
You know. This would not be an oversight committee. This would be just a, a talking tour type of thing. The oversight committee, no matter how you look at it, rests between the chief and the board.
Listen, I'll be happy to talk to anybody. You want to, you want to bring a lawn chair and sit, sit outside of headquarters and talk to me, call me up. I mean, you know, it's, it's.
One of the things government does not do really well is talk about itself. Um, your department in that one building, they do so many different things. Under policing. And I think that, that. This will be, um, for me, I'm look, um. This is what I believe that people will get to know what you do. You know, hopefully at someday, whenever we get some money, we will be able to do, um. Videos of a department going through exactly who they are and what they do. Because I, you know, I don't think that, you know, yeah, your guys are in a car and in, you show up sometimes and I think that's what they think. Um, there's a lot more that you do that I think people need to know about. Chief, um, oversight was, is not what we're talking about. Having people understand what you do is what we're talking about. You know, we were talking about use of force. Well, we're so, you're so transparent in that, that it's on your website.
Yep. Yeah, the policies and then also you have the statistics, which I think just speak to the fact that we de-escalate every day. And that's the, that's the big word that's thrown around. I mean, you know, you, you know, the data is there. I mean, you're not, you're not seeing people, you know, getting lumped up and going to the hospital all, you know, it just, you know, the stats, the, the data is there.
And I, and I agree with the Councilman Roker and Chief. I know that. It's, it's going to be a real, I think, eye-opening experience for the public to see just what a great job you guys do. And I, I stand with, uh, Councilman Roker in that we'll put you and our department up against anybody. Anybody.
Anybody.
So I think.
Thank you. Thanks.
I think this is productive.
Okay, let me just say something. You know, I received this agenda. And this discussion is supposed to start at ten o'clock, you know, uh, supervisors later.
You have received today's agenda. It was revised and sent out earlier today. We moved, uh, the chief up to seven thirty. That was the final agenda that was published.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I thought it may be if somebody, you know, listening or something. Anyway, uh, let me just say something to Chief. Do you remember I sent you one old New York Times article when Nancy Elliott was a supervisor?
Yes.
Uh, wasn't that great? Everything is the same. The reason people come to the Yorktown is, uh. Safety, easy commute and a good school. And you are part of the safety of the well-being of the people. And people still do the same thing. They believe that's why only they come here. Now, you know, things change and if they want to speak, come on down. But the only thing you can do now is cook a coffee with a cup. So it's your fault? No, it's not your fault. It's the COVID's fault, you know? That's why you don't give them free coffee. Isn't that great news?
And, and, and if I may, you know, the, I, I think it's the old adage, you don't have to fix something that isn't broken. But to hear from the chief, talking to the public, I think would be, would be a great thing. So that they learn that our police department isn't broken. Our police department is top-notch.
There was a councilman who once said, if your community loses its safety, they can't get it back.
That's right.
No, and listen, um, I've said it more than once, you know. You guys, you've, you've demonstrated your support for this agency and that's, you know what? That, um, that's not lost on the men and women, you know, who, who, you know, who report for work every day. And don't know what they're going to run into on their eight-hour tour or sixteen-hour tour. To know that, to know that they're genuinely, you know, appreciated and, and thought well of. You know what? I think anybody that, that goes to work every day should, should feel that way you get. And, and that's how you get. Productivity, you know, as well. And, you know, uh, it, it's always worked for me, you know? And if you treat people well, you expect them to treat other people well. And, you know, as a, as a nation, uh, we could all learn a little bit. You know, uh, less, uh, less shouting, more, more talking and treating everybody the way they want to be treated or they expect their family to be treated. But, um, again, like I said, uh, you know, my hesitation is because I know we've got a good thing going in Yorktown. Um, I will, I will listen and learn. You trot me out there. I've gone there as many times and talked to anybody or. You know, as many, as many, uh, you know, instances that you, you should, that you'd like. Um, but again, uh, I'm just, I'll wait to see how this, this, this other part plays out. But, uh, you know, I have faith in you guys.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. It was a great conversation. We are going to move on with our agenda, if, uh, that's okay.
Oh, that's fine.
Fantastic. You have a great, you have a great night. You're off the hot seat.
Good night, Keith.
Good night.
All right. Move on with. The Toys Building, uh, we are being joined, uh, by John DeVito, Fred Kolsch. And of course, Iron Man himself, John Taggert.
I like that Iron Man.
Yeah, well, he, he comes to like every meeting we have and.
Iron Man.
He sticks out with us every time. So, Iron Man, John Taggert.
Gentlemen. The iron, irons out all the problems.
Yeah, that too. Thank you for joining us. I'm sorry that we're behind already. I know that we want to discuss a, a code modification. Uh, that may be needed for the new tenant of the Toys Building. You guys want to start?
Sure. And, uh, like, you know, thanks for having us and, and, you know, again, getting us on, on this agenda so quickly. I, I'd like to say I've, I've been a resident of the town for fifty-five years and I, you know, I've, I've always had. Very positive, good experiences with our police department and, you know, people like Officer Door are just wonderful parts of the community. And, uh, a shameless plug for the police, so.
In these times, in these times, it's needed.
Absolutely.
Good people. The whole Door family, good people. So what have we got, gentlemen? What are we, what are we figuring out tonight?
Go ahead, Freddie.
All right. So, you know, uh, we've been working with John, uh, on the legislation and the existing legislation. And, and it does allow, uh, self-storage in the C-one district, which we're, we are a part of. Um, the language focuses on, um, self-storage in a, uh, retail shopping center. Wants it to, to not be incompatible with, um, the entrances, the facades, the storefronts. And really mo- moves it to the back of the, that type of, of development. What we have here is a, a freestanding building. That, that's not really an issue. So. Um, the, the language clarifies that that is, you know, a, a, a permitted use. And that you can have your, your, your entrance or your loading docks, loading berths. Visible from the front of the building because you don't have that, that same issue with compatibility or lack of compatibility. That you would have in a retail shopping center. So that, that's the main purpose of the, the legislation. We, we, you know, we wanted to just clarify that. So that when we, we, we get in the process, we don't start to need to get bounced around and maybe go somewhere for interpretation. And we think this would be really important and helpful to, to clarifying it. And, um, you know, allowing us to go through the, the approval process as, as smoothly as possible.
John Taggert?
Yes.
Thoughts?
Uh, my thoughts are, uh, in line with what Fred just said. Uh, but I would just amplify it, uh, in that. By way of clarification, so everybody is certain of what we're talking about. The original legis- legislation was written in, in the way it was. In order to protect kind of the visual aspect of the C-one district, which is larger lot, shopping center level things. But nevertheless, the heart and soul, along with the C-two district and the C-three, C-three district of our public commercial life. So it needs to, you know, those visual aspects need to be protected. So. Um, what we're saying here is this, um, comes in and is proposed for a standalone building. Which the, uh, original legislation did not really allow and didn't anticipate. I think personally, my, my opinion here, what is different now from when this was written only a short few years ago. Is that, uh, self-storage, like many businesses, is evolving. And I believe that, uh, my experience lately and some things that I've actually even read. Uh, that come from some, uh, of the trade journals that self-storage traffics in. Is that the, uh, the products in terms of how the buildings are constructed. Have evolved from what we used to, uh, expect to have these metal warehouses. With many, uh, overhead doors down the sides in front of it and really nothing more to much more. Uh, well-designed and interior-loaded, uh, self-storage, uh, facilities. Uh, if you think of it, you've probably seen them in urban situations. That is coming to suburbia. I think we've seen a little bit of it here with the extra storage, uh, facility that went into, um. Uh, Staples Plaza, uh, it's all interior-loaded. This is similar. And so what I worked on with Fred was, you know, let's work so that the, um, important facades are still. Uh, looked at with care and that they speak the correct architectural language to the street. In this case, there's two streets that we have to care about, Route Six and Bank Road. And, uh, you know, we added some language and it's very short and sweet. I emailed it to all of you today. And the, you know, in the first paragraph of what I sent you, it's, the change is in blue. And it basically says that you can do what we're suggesting here in a standalone building. Uh, but it has to be, and it can be visible, but it's provided that such elements are designed. And or buffered to the satisfaction of planning. The key word there to me is designed. Um, I'm not certain that, um, buffering, buffering alone would necessarily take care of it because it is a street frontage. Buffering can be part of it, but certainly the architectural design, I think, is important. Um, and I think it is also important for the business owner. Because the higher quality that the facility is, I think it's more attractive for customers to use. So that's where we're at with it. Uh, I sent it to you today. I hope you got a, a chance to look at it. I also included in red below it. The entire body of three hundred seventy-five, so you can compare to it. So.
Right. So you want us to, um, amend the code with this stuff in blue?
Correct.
All right, um, you know, people use self-storage very differently than they used to use. Self-storage twenty years ago. Now, if you've got too much stuff in your house, you bring it over there and you leave it there for a while. And you may want it back in a, a couple of months or whatever. Um, so. It's a different animal today than, than what they code provided for.
So John, can I say something? One word?
Yes.
Your clutter garage house, house is in the garage into unclutter house. That provides the, the storage space. And this way, you know, you get rid of it earlier. And if, if you, if you have to pay the money to store, you want, you will dispose this off earlier too. So maybe it's really double, double goal happening, you know, because in the end, all you end up in a, in a, you know. Trash pickup, bulk pick-up and of course, money to the taxpayer or everybody individually. So this is really a nice thing, you know? The only thing somebody asked me that, does the assessment is different? Than, uh, commercial, you know, other use? So I just, this is the only thing I wasn't sure, you know? So if you have any answers for me, I want to hear it.
Yeah, I don't have that answer. Um, that would be an answer for the assessor, uh, a question for the assessor. I, I don't know the answer to that.
Why would the assessment be different? I don't know.
We can check with, uh, with Kim Penner, our assessor, and get that answer over to you, Councilman.
No, because it's, you know, in the New York City, they have the sign really, you're a tiny little unclutter apartment. We can make it to un- uh, uh, unclutter, uh, unclutter. I mean, it's a wonderful sign. And this is a good thing to do here in the town.
I work for a woman who stored her off-season clothes in a self-storage center.
So I think what we can do, John, maybe we can, uh, next week, uh, bring it back in legislative format and we can refer it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We may, we may tweak it a little bit between now and then, but essentially the content and it, its essence will remain the same of what you've read.
Great. Gentlemen, does that work for, I want to make sure that works for, for, uh, Mr. Kolsch and Mr. DeVito. Does that work for both of you?
Yes, as, as we talked about last time, we're going to, you know, advance it on a dual track. And, um, John has put us on the planning board agenda for September fourteenth. And we'll talk to, to them about the design and, um, the architectural features as, as well as the function. So, you know, as long as we can keep on moving it forward, that, that's great. We appreciate it.
No problem. So John, just make sure that you just loop an Adam on the, on the legislative format and then next week we can refer it out.
Of course. And, uh, Fred, if you could get me, or Fred or John or both, if you can get me, um, if you haven't already, my office. The plans that you hope to show, or do you want to just come and talk about the idea?
Um, we, we will show plans. We may tweak it a little more between now and the fourteenth. So, you know, when you need them, we'll, we'll get them to you. Um.
Yeah, as soon as you're finished tweaking them, get them to me.
Okay.
It's quick.
Now, is the outside of the building going to remain approximately the same? Um, and it'd be like doors going in the front and then to your, pardon expression, your cubby hole. Where you're going to be storing stuff? Or is it going to be actual metal doors all the way around, such as a self-storage unit?
No, we, we don't want the metal doors all the way around. Um, my discussions with Fred have been. H- his latest proposal shows doors on the either side. And I asked him to work with the, uh, owners, for potential owners of the facility. To design the front and the back in such a way that it is nicer architecture and moves your eye to the center. And that basically most people will enter from a, what will look like a storefront.
Right.
And then Route Six side will have some design elements, mostly probably applications on the surface. Uh, that will again, rather than look like the back of a warehouse, will look like something that someone's taken the time to think about.
Right, right. And in all reality, that, that particular, well, not that particular building, but that particular site once housed a place called General Casting. Many years ago. And their, their actual loading dock was on the east side of the building. And the other side was another parking lot. So, you know, it's not unlike what you guys are wanting to take care of now, which was screened from Route six. So basically where the loading dock was, was basically in back of the, what was then an Arco gas station, but no gas station now. So, okay. All right. Thank you.
You know, the good part of this is that, how long has your building been vacant, John?
Over, over two years.
Over two years, right.
And it's, it's good that, you know, it's gonna have a new tenant.
Yeah, we appreciate that. Excited to make that happen.
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you all.
Have a good evening and thank you.
Mr. DeVito, did you get a chance to look at that?
Down to the gazebo this morning and we're making a material list, but I think at another time I can talk to you about it.
Yeah, I'll talk tomorrow then. Thank you.
And I'll be talking to you tomorrow too, John.
Okay.
And I'll call you too, John.
Oh, please do.
You might as well give him a call.
All right. I'll give you a call.
We'll zoom it in.
Yeah, there you go.
Adam, give him a call, would you?
Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, we're gonna continue moving along because we are a little behind here. I'm gonna go quickly over, have our town planner, John Tager, with us. Uh, we did want to once again bring forward the plan, design, district overlay zone legislation. Uh, reason being, I'll be very blunt, we are getting interested parties for the town. Um, but a lot of them are, uh, curious as to where the overlay districts stand and when are we gonna start moving them and see some action with them? And so it's a positive thing, a very positive thing for the town. Um, and, uh, and so we wanted to just bring it back to the board, have a conversation, um, and see if there are any thoughts and deliberations so we can move this forward and maybe refer, I think we already did refer it out, do we not?
I don't remember. Maura?
I recall.
They did.
Maura, did we refer this one out?
I don't think so.
No? So maybe we can refer, if there's no other changes to it, we can refer it out and, and potentially set the public hearing date.
Let's acknowledge that we got Susan's letter.
We did receive a, a letter from Ms. Siegel with her thoughts and her thoughts and concepts for it as well.
Okay.
Which, which we appreciate. But were there any, any thoughts or suggestions from the board?
Uh, is this only the housing or mixed-use commercial, everybody together?
Everybody together. I mean, it really depends on the, on the, on the specific.
On the location, yeah. But what, what I'm just, you know, I read something in, uh, general news and also in the surrounding, uh, you know, the tri-stated area that because of this COVID issue, you know, in the future, people want to live in a smaller unit and they are not too close together. So instead of building one big building, meant to maybe several smaller building, is, is this a design will be included in these kind of discussions like that? Or just have a one big building and 20, 30, 10 and something like that? It will be the need of the future.
It provides flexible zoning, uh, for those types of projects to occur where they may not be able to currently occur. Um, the conversations that we've had have been very positive. Um, a lot of interest in the town, a lot of interest up in the Lake Osceola region, which is, which is great. Yep, we're very excited about that. Um, uh, I'm not quite sure what else I can divulge, quite frankly. But needless to say, uh, John and I have been very busy fielding phone calls uh, from, from potential, uh, uh, projects. And the, it's clear that the overlay zones are, are very enticing. And we want to continue to move the conversation forward.
Well, I know someone who's interested in the Bear Mountain Triangle wants, he wants to get us to move this along so he could come and present something.
Excellent.
I think this is, um, you know, like you said, it was, it came up during the comprehensive plan, but they didn't fill in the blanks.
Right, that's where it stops. So it's just a good tool for us to utilize. Uh, I saw that we have our town clerk, Diana Quas, back. Diana, would you be able to tell us if we wanted to, uh, refer out and set the public hearing? When we can set the public hearing for?
We can refer it out tonight if you like. And then, uh, normally we leave it out for 30 days to catch all of our volunteer boards.
He doesn't have it in the form that he needs to have it in, Diana, so I, I don't know how you go there.
So we can, we can actually then refer it out next week. We can get it to legislative format, refer it out next week, just like we are with uh, this, the self-storage legislation.
Yeah.
Works?
Works.
Okay. Any other, any, any thoughts from the town board? We will move this forward.
Yeah.
And, uh, John, if you can once again work with, uh, Mr. Rodriguez to make sure that this, uh, is put into legislative format so we can refer it out next week for 30 days.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, moving forward, uh, we have with us, uh, an update on the Peekskill Sewer District. Uh, we are joined by our town engineer, Michael Quinn. Uh, we are joined by members of E D R, Bob Butterworth, Cosmo Pagano, and Mike Tamblin. Are they? Cosmo, I think we have them all joining right now.
Good evening. How's everyone doing?
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, Ted.
Evening.
Hey, Cosmo, Bob, Mike.
Cosmo, Bob, wherever Bob is, I don't see Bob.
Bob's here.
We're all, we're all on, we're in two different locations. Mike and Bob are together. And Cosmo is on, um, he can video, he can see a video. We're just.
Okay, you're on the phone.
I mean, it's my secret bunker.
I was about to say.
On the 10th floor of an office building.
That's funny. We have, uh, and we are again joined by Mike Quinn. I understand that we, uh, have an update on the I and I, uh, regarding the Peekskill Sewer District. So if you want to present, uh, to the board and give us an update, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, first off.
I'll lead off, I guess.
Go ahead, Bob.
Uh, first off, I want to thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and having us present. I think I'll, I'll do it very quickly. Uh, we, we had our metering program that took place in the Peekskill Sewer District. And wasn't sure what our results are gonna be, but I was very happy to find out that we don't have to look at everything in detail that the regulatory people wanted us to. It's something like 320,000 linear feet of sewers. We found areas that needed further investigation to be about 46,000 linear feet. We broke up the Peekskill Sewer District into 12, uh, sub-areas. We have 12 meters. And in doing so, that helped us a tremendous amount in terms of finding out where the suspect areas are. So to make it, make it really short, I'll call it Sub Area eight and Sub Area 11. If you have the report, it will tell you that Cosmo can explain the general geographic area where it is. But what we found that those two areas needed further investigation, which the New York State DEC originally wanted you to do in the SSES for the entire Peekskill Sewer District. Now we're looking at, looking at something like 46,000 feet out of the 320,000 feet. Okay, that was all based on metering data comparing it to standards that you would typically see. And it also, in, in discussions with the town, those areas had, do see higher flow during stormwater events and they do see higher flow in general. So the two, the two aspects of the infiltration inflow, the work that's gotta be done in the field will tell you what kind of groundwater might be seeping into your pipes due to, you know, defected areas and what kind of inflow might be coming in during rainfall events. That's the, the next step to take. So, um, we, we approached the standards, we utilized the standards. We did, uh, ADS was our partner on this. They did a very nice job in getting us the data. We did find out one of the sub-areas called Sub Area 10. It, there appears to be more lengths of pipe connected to it than we could determine based on the current data that we have with the town. And our report recommends further evaluation in terms of where all the length and source might be coming into that area. That's not an immediate need. It could be made an immediate need by the DEC. Uh, our report was submitted. The next step is developing a work plan. That works and will come up with a schedule that defines the next steps to be taken. The next steps involve internal investigation of the pipeline lengths. They should actually go in there, clean the pipe and TV it. There are some times the pipe is gonna be very dirty. So they're gonna have to take more measures to clean it. There might be roots in the pipes that have to be cut out. When they're TVing this, they will look for defective areas in the pipe. You generally try to do this during high groundwater times so you can see it easier. But the camera will pick up, um, if it's done correctly, which we're, our job is to, well, the job of the next step is to make sure it's done correctly. So you'll identify the defects and then you'll take all these defects and you'll prioritize them. And then based on that prioritization, you'll then have to come up with a plan for rehabilitation. Right now, the DEC has to get a work plan, which is 60 days of when the report is to be delivered. Then they have, after the, the work plan is approved, I will tell you this. They may push for more work than what we're recommending in the report. You just need to be aware of that. They will try to say, well, no, we think other areas should be evaluated. Our ground is to say, we use standards to identify the areas to be further evaluated. So after the CCTV or even parallel with it, there is an option here, there's also work that would be involved, smoke testing. And there's also airwork if you're, and all everything else fails, there's dye testing to see if there's any cross connections between an inflow source like a stormwater or catch basin that might be connected to your collection system. Smoke testing will tell you other things. Smoke testing, if it is done, is a little touchy. It creates, um, the public is more involved when you're doing smoke testing because you're putting smoke in the pipes in the ground. It's harmless smoke. They call it smoke testing, but it's harmless smoke. And at times you could find it coming out on private property because the lines are broken. Right? And that's called an inflow source. Very high groundwater or when it's raining out, that's where some of this excessive extraneous water gets into the pipes. So those are, we, we found good results, which was what I was hoping to find. Generally, you don't have to do SSES work for the entire drainage basin or in this case, the district. So the next, uh, few days is going to be, next, uh, week or so, it'll be a little hectic the minute we find, get, um, the work plan submitted. That's, the DEC won't, won't comment on, they've told us they're not gonna copy, comment on the I I report. But they have it in their possession. We submitted that by the deadline date. And now the next day is 60 days to submit a work plan. They will comment on that work plan and give the town 30 days, I think, Cosmo, 30 days?
Oh, that's not specified.
So what they're gonna do is they, they, I believe, just knowing the DEC, they might push for more areas to be further evaluated. We will be there to push back to say, no, based on these standards, these are the areas that we recommend to be further evaluated. And then there's gonna be a decision, see what happens, you know, the next step. So the next, you know, there's, like I said, the next step is the work plan. Um, and they also, after the work plan's approved, you have 18 months to do all of the field work, which would be CCTV, uh, smoke testing, dye testing, other investigative work that we see that could happen. And that's, that's what happened. You got 18 months. The goal though, is to take that 18 months and focus the CCTV in, in the, in the, uh, areas we want to evaluate when the weather conditions are best. Typically, we like to put it in the, the CCTV during wet weather. Now, we don't know at this point how long the CCTV will take place because we don't have one of those companies on board yet to come up with their work for their schedule. So the work plan needs the next step to take place of who's gonna do the work and how long will the work take?
And, and Bob, the
It's gonna last.
Just to make sure we're clear though, so we, we expect, we expected the final decision to come at sometime in December, based off of the 60 days and then the, and then the additional 30, correct?
Yes.
That's what I believe. But see, they, they received the report. Cosmo, what day did they receive the report?
Uh, August 28th, it went out via email and followed up with three hard copies as well. So they should have received the hard copies early the following week, 31st, maybe the first of September.
So we're basically waiting on them. Other than the fact you've gotta do a work plan that's gotta be in by 60 days from, um, you know, this gotta be in 60 days and so you've got, you're right. By the, you've got two months to do it from the end of August.
How, how much is the length? How much is the length of this cord? How many miles, how many feet?
I, I can answer that question. Um, Vishnu, in total, we have about 60 miles of sewer pipe in the Peekskill Sewer District. And what Bob just mentioned is that the results of the field study indicate we have about eight miles of piping that needs some further investigation. So it's like 15% of the whole system.
Not bad.
That's not bad at all.
And how many millions?
Well, we've been doing, um, like every year, we've been doing about two miles of sewer pipe cleaning and TV inspections as an ongoing, you know, process to keep sewer lines clear in Peekskill and in Hallux Mill. Um, so obviously, you know, to do, um, eight miles versus two miles, you know, it's gonna be quite a larger setup, uh, you know, to accomplish what we need to do to get through this next milestone. Uh, but anyway, the really purpose for tonight was to present, you know, what, what the findings were. And, um, you know, Bob, of course, did an excellent job of just walking you through what they did and what the results show. Um, I'll, we, you know, we'll be working together on this work plan. We'll submit that. We'll certainly copy the town board. Um, I'd like to get this report that G H T just delivered to the town and now to the DEC. I think to put that on our website for any members of the public that might wish to review it. And then we'll have this work plan, um, you know, prepared in the next few weeks. We'll, of course, bring that to the town board. And, uh, you know, as appropriate, we'll put that on our website. And then I think at that point, um, before we do anything, we want to get some feedback from the DEC. We might need a meeting with them, um, to negotiate or, or, um, further discuss. And, um, you know, after that, once we have their approval or buy-in, then we'll be looking probably early next year to, to get this, uh, field program started.
Would you keep us informed as you develop your work plan? Because I, I would rather not just fait accompli. I'd like for you to explain that, particularly to the public, what you're doing.
Absolutely. I would love to do that.
Okay.
Bob, would you?
Okay, Mike, the next, the, I'm sorry, the next step is we're probably going to be, uh, need an authorization from the town to proceed to doing the work plan.
Right. And you need that tonight? Can we do that next week? And, and what, what, what does that entail?
Okay, so the actual work plan development right now, there, there is some discretion, not discretionary, but there's identified budgets in our agreement that we need the town to authorize us to go forward on the next step to use budgets to help with the work plan. That we need the town to authorize us to go forward on the next step to use budgets to help with the work plan.
Can you do that, Michael?
I look at the work.
Yes, Alice, I mean, I, I think that the agreement had a bunch of tasks in it. And there's a task to, you know, get the D E C approval. Um, and so I would like to, you know, partake with that task, um, with, with E D R services.
Perfect.
And, um, you know, I, I think, I mean, we didn't really discuss the numbers, Bob, but, um. Are you saying that the budget, that would be okay, we just wanna authorize that task, or are you saying that, that, that would not be sufficient?
I think I have to get back to you if you're being asked to do it, I would like, I'd rather send you a quick letter proposal. To discuss it, probably, we could be doing them hourly with an upper limit or something along that line. I never can tell you what the D E C is gonna make, what hoops it's gonna take to make it drop through. I can't, I can't predict that. And they could come out and say, great, go forward, give me your work, you know, go forward with the areas you identified. Or they can say, like I said earlier in this discussion. No, we don't agree with you, let's sit down and meet and we don't agree and it could be going to back and forth. So we can give you the rates we take and there is a, a, a small budget remaining. To utilize that, that needs authorization. But I can't predict what the D E C. What they'll, what they'll do. I can't, I wish I could.
Michael, can I ask you a question? If the public is listening, I don't know that they know what we're talking about and why we're doing it, can you just? Give us a very quick understanding of what they were doing, why?
Sure, um, so the town signed an agreement with the New York State D, D E C Department of Environmental Conservation. In May of twenty nineteen. Um, this agreement was negotiated again with help from Bob and Mike Tamblin and Cosmo. Um, because originally the town received a notice of violation from the state. And we had reported over twenty, I wanna say like twenty-two, um, sewer, sanitary sewer overflows within our system. So anytime wastewater leaves our pipes, comes out of a manhole or a broken pipe, we're required to report that. No matter how small, um, the spill is, we have to report that to the D E C. And so we had reported over twenty, over the course of about, uh, I think it was eighteen months or two years. And so we did receive a violation. And the state feels like the town was not doing a good job of maintaining the collection system. Based on the number of reports that were made. Um, hence the, um, back and forth with the state, we ultimately did sign this consent order. And now the consent order obligates the town to, to follow through on different milestones. The first milestone was we had to give them our maintenance report, which is where we. We do our own cleaning and our own smoke testing every year. Um, and we put that in a report. Um, we submitted that report. We gave them the work plan to do this flow study as another milestone. And now that we've completed the flow study, we're, we're submitting, you know, we've achieved another milestone. And as Bob mentioned, our next, um, you know, water business is now to do some additional investigation. For the, um, areas where we see that there might be problems. By the way, one of the problem areas is in Hunter Brook, around the Hunter Brook, uh, District Pump Station. Now, this is, um, something that we've noticed over the last couple of years. That we have discussed with the board, uh, in the past, that. The flows at the station are much higher than originally, you know, planned. And, and so the station is really being overtaxed. And we've noticed that we were getting a lot of call, a lot of alarms, a lot of, you know, overtime responses to this pump station. And, you know, one of the solutions, of course, is to let's make the station bigger. Um, you know, put in bigger pumps. Um, that's a very, very expensive proposition, and if we can find that maybe there's some cross connections. That, and you know, and these results are showing that when it rains, maybe the stream levels are, are getting higher. Somehow water, groundwater is getting into our sewer pipes. And, um, you know, that, that's caused, that, that probably the root cause of what we're experiencing at Hunter Brook. So, I mean, this is essential, essential work that we're doing. Um, you know, we hope that we can find the magic bullet here to solve this problem once and for all. So, you know, the, the further commercial development along the two oh two corridor. Um, you know, won't, won't cause major problems at this pump station.
So this is because of the age of the, the sewer system pipe?
No, I, I think, because I think Vishnu, what we're saying is eighty-five percent of our sewer system, collection system, is well within. Standards, you know, there, there's slight increases when it rains. Um, so our pipes are, are not leaky pipes, they were installed with, you know, what's considered modern. Um, you know, techniques, even though some of our piping is forty plus years old. It still should be relied on for reliable service. So the fact that we're getting groundwater and, and, you know, maybe some, um, you know, some pumps are connected or, or other. Problems that we have yet to identify. Um, you know, one, that, that, we really should not be experiencing this in our collection system, so we're, we're concerned. And, uh, you know, this is helping guide us to, to our dollars, to, to find, isolate those problems and then ultimately. The final phase will be to actually make some of these fixes.
Can we look forward, Bob?
Just, uh, just, just, um, one more comment. It just has to be clear by all the board members, because that's sitting in front of you, it's hard to read. Uh, faces, this is only the Peak Skill Sewer District, it does not include the Halix Mills.
Oh, right.
Right.
There was some monitoring done in the past. On the Halix Mills Sewer District, and there might have been a meter that overlapped the Peak Skill Sewer District, but. None of those metering before is in the same area where the metering was done. Uh, this last spring.
Excellent.
Yeah, supervisor, we've been talking about, um, you know, a future capital project, um, you know, maybe next capital project year. To do some study in Halix Mill. And then we'll have the benefit of using some data that was collected about nine or ten years ago. Looking at what they recorded then and then maybe what happens today. Um, and, and it might help us isolate any, any problem areas, so.
You know, that, that I N I for Halix is, uh, one of, I think, one of the reasons that the, the county planning department. Shifted on its, uh, support for the Halix Mills Sewer Extension. And so that's gonna be one of the things that we're focusing on next year to continue to move that down the, down the field. Okay, so then we look forward to receiving the letter proposal for the work plan, that seems to be the next action item. Uh, and Mike, if you can pop the report up on the town's website.
Yes.
If the members of the public can read it and digest it, um, that'd be great. And we do appreciate all the help from E D R on this project, we're glad that it's moving forward. Any questions from the board? No? Okay.
Thank you guys for everything.
Thanks everybody for your time.
Thank you so much. Mike, appreciate it, Bob, thanks, Cosmo.
Have a good one.
In the bunker.
Thank you.
Everybody.
In the matrix.
Funny, Mike.
Supervisor, I was gonna stay on for the next item, I had been involved in the thirty-seven hundred Barger Street in the prior development, so I'll just stick on for the next one, that's all right.
Not a problem. So next on the list is thirty-seven hundred Barger Street. This is the Getty Gas Station, uh, at the corner of Route Six. And Barger, joined once again by our town planner, John Tegger. Uh, we have Rich Williams of Insight Design. I think we have, uh, Leo Napier with us, Danny Porco. Uh, is there anyone else that I'm missing?
Yeah, it's me, Hanny Sodano.
I'm sorry, Hanny, and Hanny, thank you very much. Thank you all for joining us, we appreciate your time. Uh, and I understand that we have an update on the project, we appreciate the packet that was sent. Uh, John, do you wanna begin or should we have Rich begin, you tell me? John, you're muted. You're muted, sorry.
Thank you, and I'm, sorry about that, I, I will let Rich begin. Uh, and I will chime in when appropriate.
Okay, very good, Rich?
Thanks guys, uh, I'm actually gonna punt to Leo tonight, so.
Okay. Adderall to Leo, come on Leo, get us across the end zone.
No, no problem. So, th- this application is, um, so hopefully you all remember it, but it's for the former Getty Station, uh, at thirty-seven hundred Barger Street. The application is to remove the existing improvements and construct a new gas station. With, uh, four dispensers, a canopy and a convenience store, the auto service business would disappear. Um, hopefully that would be considered a benefit to the town as the, the former service station, I understand, used East Main Street as kind of a makeshift. Vehicle storage area as well as refuse area. Um, the application was last before you in December of two thousand nineteen, so it's been quite some time, but we haven't just been sitting on the sidelines. Uh, it was previously reviewed by the County Planning Board, uh, the York Town Planning Board, the Advisory Board on Architecture and Community Appearance and the Conservation Board. The, in December of twenty nineteen, you, your board opened a public hearing. Um, at the public hearing, there were principally two items of interest that were discussed. One was the prior, uh, environmental contamination at the property. And the other was traffic. In April of twenty twenty, we did submit a, a package to the board that contained the. Um, remedial plans for the prior environmental contamination, uh, so that, I don't know if you all had a chance to look at that stuff, but essentially the. Site contamination has been addressed, the spill numbers have been closed by the D E C, and to the extent any further contamination is encountered, uh, once we take the building down, it will be addressed accordingly. Um, we also included in that April submission was a traffic study. Uh, following that submission, there was a series of meetings and discussions our team had with, uh, John Tegger as well as Supervisor Slater. Um, which resulted in some further plan revisions and amendments to our traffic study. The, the genesis of all that is the plan that's before you this evening. And the major change from what you had previously seen is that the. Northernly curb cut on Barger Street will be eliminated. And there will be a one-way traffic flow through the site, uh, so they would, traffic would enter on the southerly curb cut on Barger Street. And then exit onto a new, uh, defined curb cut on East Main Street. Um, that will also have the added benefit of pulling any potential traffic queuing up to make a left into the site furthest from the intersection, so that will actually should. Uh, improve traffic conditions at the site as well as the adjacent road network. Um, there were some other minor tweaks to the plan, uh, the dumpster was pulled from behind the building, kind of towards the side of the building instead. The U S Ts were taken out of the, the wetland buffer, that's the underground storage tanks, were taken out of the wetland buffer. And then the stormwater facility, uh, location was changed slightly, uh, and Rich can touch on that if there's any questions. But I think that is the, the broad overview of where we're currently at, uh, we would like to. Continue the public hearing and hopefully march this project towards a conclusion. We do have, um, Ken McWitz from Providence, if, if there's any questions on traffic, and then obviously Rich Williams is on the call here as well, uh, if you have questions on the site design.
Right, I do wanna thank Ken for joining us. Uh, and John, do you wanna jump in and provide any thoughts?
No, I think I'll let the professional team continue and, uh, comment afterwards.
Okay, very good, Rich, do you wanna jump in? Rich, you're, you're, you're muted there.
Yep, uh, what I'll do is I'll just share my screen for a few minutes, just walk the board through what the new plan looks like. Um, reiterate some of the things that Leo just pointed out to you. Just so that we're sure the board and public sees the changes. Um, as Leo mentioned, uh, the most notable change is we eliminated the existing entrance, northernmost entrance on Barger Street. We're gonna use the existing southern curb cut as a one-way in, allow traffic to circulate through the site. We continued similar to the previous, uh, plan. Uh, keeping the building in the southeastern corner. Um, kitty-cornered towards the intersection. Again, right now, one of the things that, that we focused on and we heard loud and clear from the numerous boards in town was. The current building's orientation is awkward, as you almost look at the side of the building from most of the viewpoints. This orientation also, uh, allowed us to create some additional green space and some, uh, buffer and meadow area behind the building. As Leo mentioned, we've moved the dumpster enclosure, um, from behind the building to the side of the building. We'll have a loading space, uh, to the northern portion of the site just where the dumpster enclosure. Um, one of the, one of the more notable changes too is when you're out at the site. There's a pavement scene here, but there's really no differentiation between our site and East Main Street. It's just one big patch of asphalt that continues in with the exception of a construction fence we currently have up. The only real demarcation is this existing rounded curb right here. Through the elimination of the northern Barger Street entrance, we're actually gonna have a median continue, expand to an island. We'll have plantings in our signage, but we're also going to continue that curb in our property. To create a landscaped area throughout this entire corner. Um, we plan on, uh, talking to the town about removing some of that existing pavement within the right of way. It is, uh, really gonna be dead space, uh, to, you know, to rejuvenate it as long. Um, so that you have a much more green corner than exists today.
That's the spur, that's the East Main Street spur that you're talking about, it's basically, you get, you know, dead end right over the, right at the end there?
Correct, there's a, there's an existing culvert crossing, uh, for Barger Brook and then it dead ends right here.
Yep.
So we, we thought all this pavement was kind of wasted space and we thought it could be enhanced by just creating some greenery there.
Okay.
As Leo mentioned, we did relocate the stormwater system, there is no stormwater treatment on site. Uh, the relocation didn't affect what we were proposing, we actually have a decreased and impervious surface from what you previously, previously saw. We'll still be putting in hydrodynamic separator followed by an underground detention system. So, as Leo mentioned, we're really here tonight to show you this plan and hopefully continue on process, which I think would be to continue the public hearing.
Very good, anyone else from your team that wants to chime in? Danny or Ken? No?
I think we're really here for.
Yeah, I, I think, I think everything was summed up by, by, uh, Leo and, uh, Rich.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, Rich and Leo, uh, John, know that there was, uh, there was an issue with the, um, repositioning of the building, that's been. That's been handled as of this point, John Tegger?
Well, yes, what, what you were just presented with is the, uh, revised plan. Uh, they did move the building, um, it's moved back a little bit, so there's more room to maneuver. Uh, in front of the building, and as you know. These convenience stores often have most of their parking taking place as close to the door as possible.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, so the more room that you have there, the better the site works, because there's always going to be people that do not use the parking spot. So they accomplished that, um, they also moved, um, what you saw, they moved the, um. Uh, refuse collection bin to the side of the building, so they, they don't need, and that's, that's how they accomplished moving the building back. Um, also, they, as you heard, they closed the, um, northernmost. Uh, curb cut, which was very close, almost on top of the intersection. And I had always thought, um, from, you know, not as a traffic engineer, but just as a. Someone that looks a lot, looks at a lot of site plans, that while your volume numbers that go through the site and that are. Um, uh, brought in by the use of this site may not, by the numbers affect the intersection. But having such turning maneuvers so close to the intersection, I thought probably would have an impact. Uh, we didn't get into the discussion of whether or not. Uh, this site improves those numbers or, or how it does, but certainly, uh, I think that they've, um, done most of the things that we asked them, so yeah.
Yeah, that's what it looks like and, and, uh. Excavator be there tomorrow to start knocking the building down or the next day?
Yeah, we hope.
We're hoping, we're hoping for it.
Uh, yeah, one, one thing I wanna add is that, um. We did, we have ongoing talks with D O T, uh, I, I don't know, Matt, do you wanna mention this or should I mention this with?
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we inquire with D O T, uh, about the spur that, uh, that East Main Street, they are claiming that they don't have any record of possession of it. So we're assuming, we're assuming it's ours. Um, which I, you know, which I'm sure is, is better for, for all of you than it is, you know, than dealing with D O T. Um, but that was our last conversation with them, that they had no record of possession.
I, I find that interesting because that was East Main Street.
Oh, it was.
That East Street continued over that little bridge, it actually went underneath the Taconic State Parkway and headed north. Until they had put in the new Route Six, which was in nineteen sixty-one. Um, so, um, that was, uh, that, that, that's interesting, that they have no, they have no claim. That was, that that's that's interesting that they have no, they have no claim that it was East Main Street, then I guess it is ours because. It's. It was it was given over by the county to us in ninety, I think? Ninety five, something like that?
It's it gets pretty, it actually gets pretty complicated.
We did a little research on it as well.
I'm happy if you own it, but I also know that in order to definitively determine that, there's a whole series of steps that need to be taken. We've we actually, as part of our initial research and some of the questions, Matt, prior to your involvement in this. Reached out to the right of way mapping folks and you're correct, they they actually couldn't find any records on this. They also couldn't find any records of relinquishing this.
Right.
This stretch of Route Six gets really complicated just farther to the east in Somers, we actually had to trace it back to the King's Highway. So there's a lot of history on this road and there are a bunch of steps necessary to really determine that. And we didn't find anything conclusive and we also didn't find any record that they ever released it, albeit I do believe that they released maintenance to the county. We did find record of that.
Okay.
Right, but we stopped our research. We also now own most of East Main Street as well that we got from the camp. No, okay, and so, and you know, just the last point is that you. Need to be reminded that you have a property behind this. That is always been, you know, coming in back and forth for development reasons. And so you have to be cognizant of that, of its impact on this intersection. And that you're confident as you go through with this one. That you can handle that potential development to the best of the intersection's ability. So that's why this issue of who owns the right of way keeps coming up. Because if we did own it and it was clear that we owned it, you know, there's potential to move things around. It it's something that has been, you know, talked about for many years. Anytime that there is developments talk in this section of Route Six N or I should say East Main Street.
Ken Mackowitz, do you want to comment on that? Nope, you just muted yourself. There you go.
All right. Yeah, no, the I think the design, the way it's laid out now is certainly safer and we have a an in to handle the movements. The out coming off East Main Street. In the future, if there's future development at the end of East Main Street. You know, you we can modify that or the applicant at that time can modify that and we work the plan. I believe that Mazer had a plan had come in when they were talking, I think it was either residential, maybe it was a hotel. To do some minor widenings and and left turn lane stripings to accommodate a larger volume of traffic. But I think as it stands now, we're not doing anything to preclude future development there with whatever modifications would be needed. I think it's a safe, efficient access that we've developed. We've checked all the traffic numbers and we've analyzed for for a signal there. But it's too close to the other, the the main signal on Route Six and it simply isn't warranted. So I I think we've we've done the best with the 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 frontage that we had to work with.
That's one of the sites we've looked at, John, for a hotel to reside on, correct?
That's correct.
We've continued those conversations, hoping something productive will come out of it.
Covid nineteen has made hoteliers a little gun shy.
Sure, sure.
That's an understatement.
Shell shock might be the better word.
All this being said, what are we looking for timeframe for getting started? Any, any? Idea on that?
Well, I think we have to reconvene the public hearing and so Diana, you. Is her town clerk back or Moore back?
I would suggest that we refer it out again and then and then call for the public hearing.
It was, it was previously out though last year, was it not?
Yeah, but they're doing what the boards have asked them to do. I don't know that you need to refer it out again.
Were there any changes made to the site plan that were different from the what the public hearing done in October?
Yes.
December.
Yes.
But that, but weren't those done at the request of the boards?
Yes, yes, and I think that 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 can be explained in within the public hearing. I don't think it's a new referral because it's it's, we closed on. The plan that they presented. Now in this new public hearing, they're going to talk about the the changes they made based on the comments they heard during the public hearing.
So basically the public hearing was adjourned December seventeenth of two thousand nineteen, we have to notice it to reopen it, yeah.
And and when, when can you, can you look at the calendar for us quickly so we can figure out when we can schedule it for?
We could probably do it on October sixth.
Okay.
All right.
Why don't we make a motion for us to. Have the public hearing advertised for October sixth.
I'll move.
Most second.
All in favor? Motion carries and we'll have you back on the sixth for your public hearing.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Diana, you get the excavator ready.
Yes, it's ready to go. Thank God.
All right, we're moving on to our next, we're going to welcome very honorable David Paganelli, our Highway Superintendent.
He's got that picture up there again.
Oh, there it goes again.
Superintendent Paganelli and John Tegger, can you jump back in if you don't mind, if you're still listening? Thank you, I just don't know how, because the first one, I don't know, that shouldn't take too long, we can jump into the second, which I know you're a part of. And we were just waiting for Dave's audio to connect. Dave, you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Right, so we got two, a couple of items to discuss that you requested on the agenda. We're going to start with the equipment upgrades. Talking about an R F P for a street sweeper and potentially purchasing this sewer vector. Do you want to, and just brief the board on both items?
Yep, actually the sweeper is a sweeper that we, previous to this year. We've been hiring a company to come in and sweep our town. Unfortunately, the product productivity was not what we thought it should be. So this year for the same cost, I believe it was thirty six thousand dollars, nine thousand a month. We were able to rent one for four months, which was great, we did the whole town and then half the town again. The problem being that, as we saw on August fourth, when over a hundred trees came down, the town unfortunately got a little scruffy looking once again. So the sweeper that we had rented is a two thousand and eighteen, it has nine thousand miles on it and nine hundred and. Nine hundred and fifty something mile hours on it. Brand new, this sweeper's two hundred and thirty five thousand hours. It is currently available for a hundred and forty thousand dollars. That being said, we we have to go out to bid, we can't just, even though we know the history of it, we've had it for four months, we can't go and just buy it. So we're going to go out to bid and hopefully they win the bid based on the criteria.
And you're working with Mr. Rodriguez, our town attorney on that?
Yes, yep, I have, I have a bid drafted up, he put some verbiage into it with respect to best value. So yes, I just wanted to make everyone aware that that's the path we were traveling.
Very good, and when do we expect to approve the R F P to go out?
Um, well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking for. Yeah, it's it's a bid.
With that amount of money.
I guess he's asking for a resolution authorizing, you know, Diana's advocate.
Yeah, no, I understand. And Dave, remind me, we, I know you spoke with Pat about this.
Yes.
He's on board with the sweeper, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so we'll make a motion to go out to bid for the streets.
Can I say something here? And you know, instead of paying that much rent, you know, if you buy or even whatever you have to bond, whatever. It will be way ahead and you already use this equipment, so you are familiar with the machine, right?
Yes, actually, and we have the money available in our fund balance to be able to make this purchase.
Oh, that's good.
So we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so.
Thank you.
Authorizing that to go out for bid. Talk to us about the sewer vector quickly if you want.
Okay, that, yeah, that's sort of down the road a tad, I just wanted to make you aware of it. Sewer has a vector, last year we test tested one, we were considering maybe going. Havesies with sewer, it was four hundred and forty five thousand dollars, which was a little steep. The one that is sewer has is a Mac, it's pre computerized system, so it's relatively easy to work on. It is a nineteen ninety six, okay, I know that's a little scary, twenty four years old, but it. We feel that.
Not scary at all.
Right, and especially a Mac, right, a Mac.
That's right.
A pre computerized Mac is, you know, they're worth their weight in gold. So our thought is it has a jetter on it, which is very important for cleaning out drains and. In addition to suction, you can run a hose through pipe and clear it out, so the jetter is really important to us. And I believe the jetter needs minimal work, a lot of which we could do in-house. And to refurbish the entire machine is somewhere around eighty thousand dollars, which, you know, we're talking again, down the road. I would just rather, you know, put my hat in the ring, so to speak, before, you know, anything comes to pass. I spoke to Ed Mahoney about it, he was on board with it. So, you know, that was just, I wanted to bring that up, I don't know necessarily with what we're going to discuss next if I'll, you know, have the ability. To do the renovations to it at this particular time, but I just don't want to see it, you know, see it disappear or see it just rust away up at the hill.
Does Sewer have a plan to unload it, if not to you?
Um, they don't actually, it's just sort of sitting there, they had purchased a new new jetter, which works great for them. But we've had instances where actually our vac oil, which is, it's okay, but it's not a vector. We've had to lend that to water when their vector goes down, so we really should have a secondary vector in town. So that, you know, we share it, we always borrowed it from Sewer, Sewer will always borrow it from us. We we were certainly like we did with our our vac oil a month or so ago, lent it to water, you know, when their machine was down. So that's I just, I just, you know, it's a first blush shot over the path.
It's not, it's not going anywhere.
Yeah, but it is unfortunately rotting away, you know, it just sits there.
Can you move it, is there a place you can, you can move it so that it doesn't get damaged being outdoors?
It's big, really big, I mean, I can't even fit it in my garage.
Okay, will that fit in the dome, Dave?
Yes, but then I wouldn't have any salt in there.
No, 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 the other one.
Oh, the, yeah, but that's where I keep my tree truck.
Oh, okay.
Because that also has a height issue.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll talk to you this week about that, that that Mac, I I had a similar idea for that.
Good, okay.
Great. So we will wait to see how things unfold for the regarding the vector. Want to move forward on the on the building upgrades?
Yes, as of now, we are in for a preliminary review for the for the ventilation system, that's all been put in. I met with John Tegger today, he's drafted up some. Again, initial plans with respect to. There's, there's two parts, one part is the ventilation, that's all in, we've got, you know, a forty page document. Detailing everything that's going to be done there. And that is is in for review at this point, we are just waiting, we just, we're we're on stage one. In terms of, John came up with some drafts today, he's going to finalize them within the next week or two. And then we'll speak to John DeVito to get some sort of idea. You know, you have to have a plan and you have to have a rough cost associated with it to put in, you know that better than anybody, Matt, to put in for the grant. So that we're moving along with that as well. The seventy thousand dollars.
Is that the downtown revitalization grant, which grant was that?
No, this is the three, these are both Disney grants, the three seventy five is. The three seventy five is for the addition to the building and the three fifty was for the ventilation. And then we have seventy thousand a senate grant for the. Your speed is signs at sixteen locations and that is moving along very well, the P D has has really, you know, taken and Diana have taken that by the horns. And, you know, we're just trying to ascertain what the cost to highway will be to include. Or we may have to throw in our labor as a, as a, you know, oh, we're willing to throw this in if you, you know, I think we were at fifty eight hundred dollars for the posts and what have you.
John, can you share the plans with the board? When you're ready?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
No, the I said, I asked John if he could circulate the the plans on the addition.
Yeah, I went, I went over them with Dave, but I, you know, it was just really content, I I it's not gussied up really, no labels yet, which I'll finish in a number of days, not going to take me two weeks.
Great. All right, fantastic, anything else on the building upgrades, Dave?
Um, yes, I have a major problem, of course, highway always has a major problem, I have no heat. And I I would like to, I had someone come in back in May, give me a price. It was a person who does all the work for the town, we have five gas fired boilers, which is rather unique in town. So there's only one company that does work on them. When they came in on May, they basically told us that these things are shot and they wouldn't work on them because they're falling apart. So as we're closing in on winter, unfortunately, I have to, I believe it would be an R F P. Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, because there are various different ways to address the issue. Hundred and twenty, one twenty two.
Is that, and that's not part of any of the, that's not part of the vent system, is it?
It is part of the vent system.
But then you.
And that's, and that's the catch twenty two.
But then you can't spend the money until we get approved by the state.
Correct, well, although now that's the catch twenty two, if I don't have heat, there'll be no highway department this winter. That's, that's the issue, you know, so I had, I had hoped that this would have been moving along more quickly, but, you know, I guess I overestimated how quickly it could get done.
So what do you need us to do?
I need you to give me permission to, Adam, what would it be, it would be an R F P?
If we're talking about replacement, it would be a bid.
Well, it's replacement, but there are various, I've already spoken to two different contractors with respect to proposals. And that's why I wondered if it would be request for proposals as opposed to a bid, because there are no specific bid specs. Somebody says, oh, we can do that with three boilers, you know, based on, these things are ancient, based on technology today. Or we can do it with, you know, two boilers if we upsize them. So I don't know, how do we, how do we go out to bid for something like that when there is not a definitive, a definitive criteria per se?
And how does it fit with your your design plan for your H V A C? You have to jump in here because this is your area.
No, it's, it is part, it's not part of, it's not part and parcel to the ventilation. It's not the, H V A C is is more ventilation than it is air conditioning and heating. It's it's more to to exchange the air in the work section, the garage section of the of the building. That when we have, we're working inside and trucks are running that, we don't have that carbon monoxide buildup. So it's really, it's quite complicated.
Yeah, yeah, Tommy, but for the, I'm just curious, I know this is the business you're in. So the boiler issues that we're seeing at highway. So the boiler issues that we're seeing at highway, I mean, obviously we have to give them heat. I mean, that's, you know.
Well, we have, Dave, if I'm not mistaken, you have a backup waste oil burner.
Waste oil, yes. Waste oil contributes about 12 to 15% of the heat in the entire building.
Right, right. Now, how many, you know, I, I really never looked at the heating system and they, shame on me. In the, in the highway garage.
Five.
Five boilers?
Yep.
All gas?
Yep.
All shot?
Yep. This is an easy conversation for me. I could just say yep.
Can I, can I just, can I just ask though, I mean, and I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to take this the wrong way, but I'm a little, I'm a little baffled by it, by the fact that we are only, that we're finding out that there's no heat. My, because my question is though, and this is part of a conversation that I had earlier today with some folks. Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be useful to do a facilities assessment so that we have a, an understanding of the state of all of our facilities and buildings and understand if there are issues like no heat in the highway department?
Well, I believe, I believe in I, you and I spoke about that unless I'm, unless I'm hallucinating.
You and I have spoken about it.
Right, that I agreed that it would be a good idea to do an assessment. But at the time, there was a problem with respect to money, as I recall. Because let's, let's not lose, let's not lose sight of the fact that we've been on a spending lockdown since May 17th. March 17th, rather. So, yeah, so I don't, I don't disagree, but the unfortunate, unfortunately, the situation at hand is it's September, all right? It's going to get cold quick. You know how long it takes to go out to bid for things? And then, then the things have to be ordered, then the things have to be brought in. So.
I get it. I totally get it.
And I agree 100%.
Without doing it. That's not my problem. My, my question though is now at the end of the day.
Right.
We're, we're going to be nearly a million in at the highway department.
Right.
With the, with the addition.
Yep.
Vent system and now fixing the heaters in a building, in a building that is from, John, what year?
1950.
1950. That's my, that's my only point. And I'm not trying to be sarcastic about it. I'm just saying.
No, it's, I, I, I take sarcasm well.
I know.
You look up smiling.
Well, you do. You can take it all smiling right now, Dave. But my, my point being is I wonder, I'm just, it just concerns me that we're putting nearly a million dollars into a building and we just don't know to what end.
Correct.
And, and that's my concern. And that's, that's real money. I mean, that's real money that we have to.
No question about it. So is, I agree, but so is 10 to 15 million for a new garage. That's real money.
Against that. But, but I just, I just don't want to be in a position where. Excuse me one second. I don't want to be in a position where I think, what I'm starting to say is I think we really need, it would be in our best interest and the town's best interest to figure out a way next year.
Yes.
To do a facilities assessment, because.
I agree.
Throw bad money at, at, at things that a facilities assessment is going to tell us that are completely outdated. You know, that's where we can make at least an educated.
The YC, the ACCYCCC is a prime example. Half the people, half the people in there are either paying a reduced rent or paying no rent. So, I mean, I don't know necessarily that that, they're, they're, I agree with you 100%. Every building in town, including town hall, including, including the ACYCC. Everything should be, should be addressed, absolutely. And you know what? And, and that's the only way to tell is an impartial person coming in that doesn't have an agenda. I agree.
I just want to make it, I just want to make educated decisions. And right now, we don't have a choice. We have to fit. We have to, there's no doubt about it. And I'm not arguing against it.
No, I, I got that.
Best interest moving forward that when we're to have, to your point, an independent assessment that helps us make the right decisions with frankly, a lot of money. I think the last facilities, last facilities assessment was done in 1995.
Right, Aaron did it.
I thank, I thank Renee Fogarty for that. She lent it to me. I read it and you could literally just slap 2020 on it. And it's the same thing, which, which is very, very concerning to me. But I, I think that the, we, you know, maybe we as a board should have a, a more in-depth conversation about a facilities assessment moving forward so that we're making the right investments. Such as, I mean, again, and I'm not saying we're.
No, I, I agree. You and I spoke about this. I agree 100%. I, I, I was in favor of us facilities, but we did go into that situation with the lockdown. And I think if I recall, when we discussed it, it was somewhere around $37,000, correct?
That was an estimate that we had kicked around with John, right? With, with our planning department. Figuring out how much something like that would cost. I mean, I, I think it would be smart for us to go try to get some real numbers so that we can plan financially next year to, to engage in it.
Um, Matt, I totally agree with you, but I think let's not stop there. Um, I, in addition to your facilities assessment study, you really have to do an equipment study as well.
And we started down that road. We started down that asset management program, uh, which, which would have been the first step in that equipment in, in, in what you're talking about. If, if, assuming I, I understand what you're referring to.
No, no, that, that's exactly what I'm talking about because you know what? As I listened to, to David talk about the, the map that was sitting in, in the sewer department. I always, I, I'm, I'm amazed that we have so many, so many different departments with the same thing. And I don't know, but you know what? I think that there, there could be a better utilization of, of what we purchase. You know, David, he, he just explained that, okay, we're all, they allow him to use it when he needs to use it or whatever. But I, you know, and this was one thing that I had was, got stuck in my craw. It's like, we just take for granted that every department can have the same of everything. Let's all sit down and see what each department has. And then think about when you want something new. How old is, is, you know, if that same piece of equipment is held by another department? Perhaps we, you know, we buy one and, and let them both use it. Um, it's, I, I get, I get nuts when people come and say, well, it broke down. And if it's 25 years old, yeah, you better consider it's going to break down. And it should have been in your planning, in your planning doc, capital planning document. Because a lot of, of, of these, this equipment is quite expensive. But I agree, I think an assessment of our facilities is absolutely warranted.
Ed, you wanted, Councilman Lachman, you wanted to chime in?
Yeah, you know, I did. I, you know, I think you're, you're right on the money with the facilities, the facilities assessment. And I really think that, you know, we should look at, what can we do to get heat? Number one, without having to replace everything. And I think we need to do a facilities assessment because, you know, you're dumping what could be 10 to 20% of a new building into an old building. As Alice pointed out, that this stuff, you know, is breaking down. We're 70 years old in this building. And, and, you know, we, we talk about the, 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 the cost of the new highway garage. We could put that into the old highway garage in five years and still be looking at having to do more and more and more as we go down.
Yeah, I, I hear you. But in Dave's defense, and I, and I think John, we've had this.
Not, you don't need to defend it. It's not.
Defense and, and John and Dave and I've had this conversation a lot of times. There, there really is no true number for us to work with on a new highway garage. We don't have, we don't, we don't have that. It never got to that point, unfortunately. And, and so I think that, that it really does, you know, we're, we're guessing.
But looking at buildings, it's not the, it's not only the highway garage. I don't know how many times the town board looked at whether it was expanding our building that the town hall is or, or buying a new one. Again, you know, it's, it, it's like, we need to look at everything, not, you know, I know you're fixated on this highway garage, but you know what?
Let's count to one, rogue or finish.
But look at the other facilities. Town Hall is old too.
There's no elevator. You know, you know, it breaks, it breaks my, I got to tell you, when, before, before we, COVID and, and there were people out into the building, it killed me that folks who couldn't get upstairs, couldn't come to my office. It still kills me. I mean, that's, that's not right.
Yeah, not in this day and age. Correct.
So, you know, I, I agree. I think that, you know, maybe that's something, you know, John and, and I met with, with John and Pat today uh, and as we're working through the capital budget and, you know, John, maybe that's something that we can, we can revisit with Pat to see if there's something that we can do in planning for next year.
For the assessment?
About David.
For the facilities assessment, yes.
Yeah.
That man, David is probably one of the best caretakers of people's money that you will ever see. He under, he knows what he's got to buy and it's kind of like he plays Scrooge all year just to collect his pennies. And then he comes to the point, so well, I got the money.
Yeah.
Because, and, and you know, it's so well appreciated. I, I.
No, it is. And Dave, I'm not trying to be combative at all. I just.
No, Matt, I, I, I agree 100%. Thank you, Alice. I appreciate that, you know. I'd, I'd like to, I like to come, when I come with a problem, I like to at least come with some sort of a financial solution. Um, you know, we've done very well with our fund balance, you know, thank God. And we, you know, we've struggled to do so. But, you know, the fact that I'm even considering taking a 24-year-old backdoor and spending maybe 70, 80,000 fixing it up, rather than spend 450,000 on a new machine because I know I need, I'm going to need a loader. I know I need a tree truck. Clearly, clearly trees are an issue.
Right.
You know, I know, I know I need really, for a town our size, second largest town in Westchester County, when Greenberg has multiple street sweepers and we don't even have one, you know, and I'm not looking for a brand new one. I have a situation where I could, we can, you know, we can save $100,000 and have something that we've used for four months. We know it's reliable. We know it has no, you know, ongoing issues that like you, you buy something sight unseen. So, you know, we always try, we, we all do. Everybody, the entire board supervisor, as a member of the board, everybody, all the department heads in town, do, do their best to do the most they can with what they have to work with.
I agree.
Uh, yeah, I do too. And I do, and I do agree with Alice's assessment, Dave, every time that you've come to me with a problem, you've also come with a solution and I appreciate it. And you do your homework. You do.
I try.
You do. I think that the town board, you know, it's really more of a town board issue is, is the, and again, you and I agree on it. Is, is a facilities assessment. And this is just another reason why we should do one, just to make sure we're making, making smart decisions. But, uh, so, so Tommy.
Agreed. And that, you know what? That might have been something, two years ago, somebody could have, five years ago, picked up and said, hey, you know, these boilers are 30, 40 years old. They're going to be a problem. Look, I'm not a plumber, so I look at them, you know, Tommy knows boilers. He'd be able to look at them and say, hey, there's, you know, these things are going to die any day now.
Right.
But unfortunately, I don't have that skill set.
And not to mention the efficiencies you're probably going to gain by, by, by the new, by the new equipment, right, Tom?
This, this question is for Scrooge. I mean, Dave. You around tomorrow? Are you, are you tied up anywhere? No, I'll give you a buzz. Like I say, shame on me. I've never even looked at the boilers in the, in.
You know what? And that, that might be able to give me a good jumping off point. And you may say, hey, you know what? They're just jerking you around. They don't want to work. They want, they want $120,000 worth of work. And you know what? These, these, these can be used. And that's something that, you know, you would be an unbiased opinion on. So I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll take a look. You know, I mean, it may be, I may walk in and go, oh, boy. You know, and, and, and call the Smithsonian. You know, I mean, I, I've done this, a couple of my customers, they go, well, what do you think I should do with this boiler? I told them, I said, call the Smithsonian because it's got needs a new one. But, uh, it's, it's, I'll, I'll, I'll try to pop over tomorrow morning.
All right. And then can, can we at least get, you know, get permission to go out to bid? And Adam, what do we say would be a bid? Would it be an RFP? What do we think we should do with this?
Yeah, I think it needs to be a bid, assuming we can find the scope.
Okay.
Dave, you should probably, you should probably pick up the, pick out the system you like the best and then have that bid on. So you really need to make that decision.
Right. Well, I have, I do have certain criteria on, not, not the person that has the contract for the town, but the person that spec'd out the ventilation. So they have criteria. So that would probably be the best bet. The, the, the guy, the person who works for the town's a lovely person, but it, it was like this. I get an invoice saying it'll cost $122,000 to put new boilers in. And I'm like, well, can we, I said to Ann, call them up and ask them for something more specific. And he says, well, what do you want that's more specific? I said, I like to know what the equipment is, you know, what the amount of time it's going to take, you know, it, you don't just throw around, you know, $122,000 like it's, you know, chump change.
Right.
And remember, depending on the cost of the equipment, you can do it a bonding. I think we're, we're finishing up on one of our bonds this year, correct?
Yes, my bond, my bond is done this year. That was $720,000.
And I think the rate is pretty good right now still.
Yeah, the rates are really good right now.
They are. Adam, do you want us to make a motion or do you want to, do you want to do more legwork first? What's more, what's helpful? Because obviously, listen, we got to get them heat. I mean, there's no doubt about it. We're not going to let, let that continue and as we get closer to the winter. So you let me know how you want us to handle it.
I think we should wait till next week so we can just hammer down on the scope. Well, do you have a, some design parameters of what you need to get, Dave?
I do. I have some design parameters from APA. It used to be MIRBLANK, yes.
Okay. Dave, is there, is a week difference? That, that's not going to kill you, is it?
No, um, how long, if we go out to bid, how long do we have to have it out to bid? 21 days?
No, you have a week.
Okay. Yeah, I'm only concerned about, you know, the ability to, and you know what? I'll, I'll, I'll own this because, you know, if it, if it hadn't been for COVID and it hadn't been for the million other things that were going on, I should have been more active in pursuing this. I was, I was kind of, I was kind of pursuing parallel tracks, hoping that we'd get the grant in time, that we'd be able to use that 70,000 that's in that grant towards the ventilation slash heating part of it. And then we would only be on the hook for $50,000, $52,000.
Yeah, I got you. I got you.
But unfortunately, my, my parallel tracks are starting to converge as the, as the weather is starting to change.
Yep.
I almost, we couldn't do that. And to put in a hot air system with regard to the ventilation system, but we'll, we'll talk tomorrow. I'm just.
Why don't we wait till next week? So this way, Tommy can get over there and, and give you his assessment. And then you and Adam can, you, Tommy and Adam can work this out with specifics and then, and then we can, we can approve it next week. And then, so really you, in theory, you could have it approved and then out and returned in, in two, maybe three weeks.
Okay, super.
Okay.
Good. Yep. Excellent. Thank you.
Dave, thanks for all your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Next item on the agenda, I just wanted to bring back, forget about it, the solar and battery laws, just to the board. Just as a reminder, we closed both public hearings. But I just wanted to bring it back one, one last time to the board to see if there, as a refresher, just keep it alive. John, you want to, you want to just give us a quick refresher on, on both, very high level?
Sure. You saw each of these, the last was in mid, late July, I believe. We worked on some modifications of the solar law and we worked on modifications for the battery law. The solar law, we worked on things such as screening and the sizes of systems. We did change, you know, some of the nomenclature to stay in keeping with the model law, which has changed as well. The battery law, we made some modifications to respond to comments from some of our advisory boards in terms of setting limits and minimums on the sizes of properties in which those things can go to make sure that they don't overwhelm a neighborhood in which they are proposed for, in particular, you know, for a residential zone. You know, things such as that, we really were working on that's to ensure that these things were able to be done at the same time we're protecting our communities, neighborhoods to the greatest extent that is possible. And I think that's pretty much the basics. I mean, I have them here on my computer. If you wanted me to get into any other detail or. And I think that's pretty much the basics, I mean, I have them here on my computer, if you want me to get into any other detail or refresh your memory on anything. But that's the ten thousand foot, uh, summary.
Yeah, didn't you send us something on that?
Uh, I didn't send it, anything on that recently, but. You, you did all have the final versions, uh, in, uh, late, late July, yes. And we did have lengthy discussions on each and every modification that was made, in fact, uh, I recall that I went through them. Uh, word for word, which is fairly painful, I think, for everyone. So, yeah, we did go through all of it.
Thank you for that information on the solar law and other jurisdictions.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, that's right, oh, oh, you're referring to that, yes, I sent you something a couple of weeks ago. Some, some good background knowledge on, uh, uh, how solar and the, and the issue of removing trees. In terms of their ability to sequester carbon, how those things compare out. And those, those articles that I sent you are representative, there are, you know, many, many that you find very easily.
And we do, in the new, in the modified version, which we had the public hearing on, we did, um, include that. Uh, carbon, uh, sequestration, is that the right word?
Sequestration, I think.
Yeah, we, we included that as part, was one of the requirements, should, should a, uh, trees or woodlands be, uh, disturbed?
Correct, uh, a developer will, will be required to do the calculation.
What was that, John?
Uh, I'm sorry, interrupted you, I didn't mean to, um, the developer of the solar, uh, installation will be required to do that calculation. To compare what those things are, I think, is probably what you were saying.
Yes. And I also said that that would be above and beyond the, them, the, uh, the requirements put forth by tree law, which they would have to adhere to as well.
Right, exactly.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board on this? Like I said, I just wanted to keep it on our radars. And considering that it's been about, I don't know, six weeks since we had our public hearings, I just wanted to just do a quick refresher on it.
Yeah, so you think you'll be moving it to, um, I think, uh, to a decision at some point?
Uh, I, I'm comfortable at this point, moving it to a decision, I'm curious, how does the rest of the board feel on it?
Yeah, I'm going there.
I'm comfortable as well.
Tom, you're, you're muted.
Sorry, sorry, uh, yeah, let's, let's get some closure to this.
Councilman Patel?
You, you, you don't want to, are you voting tonight?
No, we won't, no, we won't vote tonight, no, no.
There was some, uh, you know, thing mentioned and sent out by, uh, one of the residents. And the expert from Hunterbrook, I don't wanna say Musk, Paul Moskowitz, you know, there are two large project, uh, you know, he had some. Issue of the person developing something on the Hunter Hill Avenue and then somewhere north.
Yeah, no, I, I received Mr. Moskowitz's, uh, correspondence and I apologize, I, I, I forgot to respond, I think it was right around the time of the, of the, of the storm. Um, uh, I know he and I also played phone tag on this, uh, but it had something to do with, uh, I think some, some business concerns. Um, but I don't think that that's, that falls within our realm when considering, uh, legislation on a, on a regulatory process.
Can you tell me what it is, cause I didn't get that?
Yeah, he said that, um, if my memory serves me correctly, that there was, um, some issues with one of the, um, applicants. Business Bureau, um, but I don't, that, that doesn't fall within our realm, um, and, and so I, I appreciate the information. When, when considering, uh, you know, I, I think what we're trying to consider is a global regulatory framework, you know, for these types of projects. Within the town, um, better business bureau complaints, I don't think, uh, really falls wi, within our bailiwick during this consideration.
No, but let me know, if you want to include the, uh, approve the project tomorrow, right away, you know, both of this like that, then, uh, you know, if you have to think it that. Just, we cannot just approve right away without knowing it, you know, the guy can just start it up, everything, that is fine and then disappears, you know?
I think that undermines the, 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 the planning board process, and so even if we, even if this were to be approved. The applicant would have to begin at the planning board process and adhere to the tree law and the wetland law and, and all the other, uh, regulatory requirements. That the town already has in place, in addition to, um, uh, the, the regulatory requirements that would be required here. And the planning board would be able to make a fair and accurate assessment, uh, as to the application, John, am I correct in that?
Yes, I believe you're correct in that, absolutely.
And of course, there'd be, you know, public input, public hearing, um, you know, everything as, as every other project goes through the approval process. Uh, secret process, the whole, the whole bit.
No, we know that the, the way to go is solar is a very, very important thing in today's world. So, you know, it's just not that they don't want to stop something, but as long as we do it right, you know, everybody happy.
A hundred percent, Councilman, and that's why we're trying to focus on, on a regulatory framework that provides a fair, but, but frankly, I think a, um. It's getting late, so I'm, I'm losing my words, but a fair, uh, and, and, and detailed process for them to follow, uh, to make sure that, to John's point. The integrity of our community isn't lost through these projects and it gives the planning board a framework to work with them.
You know what, if we don't start somewhere, um, I know one of the arguments people have said. Is that, oh, if there's a storm, they'll only, they won't be able to get, um, energy from whatever, whatever, uh, power. Power driven source it is. Maybe not for now, but in a while possibly, and I think that we've gotta look forward to, um, these new. These new methods of, of energy.
And I remember the, uh, the conversation we had with, with Swarnoff, uh, Pajari of the, of the CSC, the Climate Smart Communities Task Force. Talking about microgrid technology, which really isn't, in, in reality, too far away. But these are all components of being able to institute microgrid technology, uh, and so if that's what we wanna see. Uh, to make sure that our grid is resilient, uh, not to mention the, the positive environmental impacts that we will have. Um, again, to Councilman Roker's point, gotta start somewhere, and, and this will be the first step towards both of those.
But in that case, yes, so far behind, you know?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we know.
Right. Well, good, it seems like the board would be, it seems like the board's comfortable in putting, in bringing closure to this, so we can.
Yes.
Next week. Any, anything else on this from the board? Seen not, uh, no heads, okay, we're gonna move on to Fitness Court at Granite Knowles. We've got our park superintendent, Jim Materano, joining us, uh, he's been waiting patiently. Jimmy, you there? He's got a new headset, look at this.
Yeah, he's like the attorney, town attorney.
Yeah, well, I think, I think Adams were, were, I don't know, Adam, we got some competition now.
I like mine better.
I mean, he's got a cool microphone, you don't have that, he wins.
How we doing, guys?
Good evening, Jim, is, um, Alex Golden or Matt Talbert joining us, do you know?
They should be on shortly, um.
I just wanna make sure that they're included. And I know, I apologize, we're late, but I appreciate, we're not, believe me, we're actually, we're not doing.
Yeah, doing pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, we, we caught most of the way up. Now, I think Matt's trying to kill you from finishing on time, so all Talbert's fault.
Let's see. I mean, one more presentation after this.
Do we have anyone from NFC on? Nope.
Uh, I, I have one person in the waiting room, I don't know who it is, um, it says Alex Golden, Trent, Trent?
Yes, Trent, Trent, NFC.
Okay, so let Trent in.
Probably be presenting.
Okay. Trent, how are you?
Doing well, good evening, everyone.
Thanks for joining us, we appreciate it.
Of course, thanks for having me.
Trent, are you presenting, uh, for NFC tonight?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful, and, uh, just to give you a little bit of back, backstory, uh, Mr. Talbert, uh, discovered NFC. Uh, showed them to me, uh, I love the idea, um, I think it's a perfect, uh, opportunity and the perfect location at Granite Knowles. Where the existing putt putt is, I don't know if you have, uh, the ability to share the screen, I can show you, uh, the area we're looking to do this.
Yep, you should be good to go.
If you see that.
No, it's not coming up, let me know.
Not coming up?
Nope, try it again.
All right, it's, uh. We can, uh, let me work on that and we can do it later, let Trent go.
Okay, I see Matt Talbert just jumped in, so Trent, go ahead.
Great, well, hey, thanks, everyone, we'll jump right into it, I'm calling in from San Francisco, so you guys are a little bit later than me. Uh, but nonetheless, appreciate the time, I think what we'll do, Jim, is just kick it off with this short film, and then we got a couple of slides, we'll keep things moving for you guys today, does that sound good?
Appreciate it, thank you, yeah.
Sounds great.
So just a two-minute video, I think this does a better job than, uh, even I can of explaining what this program's about, we'll have a couple of slides, couple of minutes to chat about it.
Excellent.
So if we work this okay, you guys should see the screen showing up. And then I'm gonna press play, um, forgive me if it lags a bit, I know sometimes this thing's a little finicky, but we should be pretty good to go here.
All right.
We're changing the way America thinks about fitness, with two hundred fitness courts open, our campaign is growing. From college campuses to city parks and trails, we're bringing free fitness everywhere, and we're just getting started. Hi, I'm Mitch Manager, founder of the National Fitness Campaign, National Fitness Campaign was founded in nineteen seventy-nine when we opened the first fitness court. Redesigned for the twenty-first century, the fitness court is the world's best outdoor gym. Our seven movement, seven-minute system allows you to use your own body weight to get the perfect workout, easy or hard, it will work for you. Our goal is to build healthy communities by making outdoor fitness an essential part of people's lives, so that each day is better than the last. And this year, two thousand certified ambassadors will be trained to deliver classes, challenges, and clinics as part of our National Fitness Campaign. We'll also be hosting training camps on college campuses across America. The Fitness Court mobile app is your gateway to enroll in these programs, learn the moves and take challenges as we dig deep to create impact. From our partners across America, NFC partners and sponsors are providing thirty thousand dollar grants to two hundred and fifty qualified cities. National Fitness Campaign is a social enterprise and I take no salary, so all the money we raise goes directly to building fitness courts across America. We're proud to have helped cities of all sizes raise millions of dollars from respected sponsors to support free fitness. Wherever fitness is a priority, you can find a fitness court. Building beyond two hundred cities and colleges, we're now partnering with large cities using urban movement data. To map the best locations for pedestrian infrastructure, we're bringing fitness courts to within ten minutes of population centers everywhere. We're now committed to raise a hundred and fifty million dollars to bring the campaign to one thousand cities and schools. By twenty twenty-one, building the largest fitness movement in the world. Join us and let's make world-class fitness great.
All right. So hopefully gives you a little energy late at night, uh, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll flip over now to a few slides. And, uh, I'll take you guys through this, and then we'll have a little time for some questions. So let me make sure we've got the right one, and, uh, Jim, I was able to put the plan in here too, so.
Great.
Yeah, I think this should hopefully hit a couple of birds with one stone here.
And it's really just a perfect piece for this park, you know, you have your athletes that usually, uh, need, need dry, dry land workout to do. You have hikers that walk by the, uh, this park as well, you know, basketball players, et cetera, so, uh, it's really a multi-use. Seniors that play pickleball can train on this thing, uh, it's really gonna be great for everyone that goes up there to use the park.
Cool.
Cool, so, um, slide showing up for you guys?
What was that, Councilman?
Any swimming pool you are talking about, or only the exercising machine and like that?
No, it's.
Only exercising machine, we have enough pools.
Yeah. You wanna tell us what the commission said about this?
Uh, they, they liked the idea, so we, we just, um, I know the NFC, uh, NFC wanted to come before the town board, make sure they had your blessing. Um, so they, uh, they, they like it, and, and there's Mr. Talbert, one of his ideas.
And he's on the call.
I'm here.
Okay, well, we just wanna make sure.
Don't sound too excited there, Mr. Talbert.
No, it's kinda late, you know?
Oh, sorry.
Matt was napping.
All right.
So we'll run you guys through this, again, appreciate the time, um, you just saw the background in the, in the film, but we're based here in San Francisco. And we really wanna work with cities, towns of all sizes that are interested in, in providing healthy living opportunities and infrastructure for the community. Uh, so that's where we connected with Jim and, uh, folks there locally, and it seemed like the park you guys have and, uh, what you're building towards there is a great fit. Which we'll talk about, um, you might remember the old fitness courts, you saw one in the film, we've been.
We have one in Downing.
Yeah, we have one.
Have one.
That's great, so, uh, we were fortunate to see the campaign grow to thousands of sites back in the eighties and nineties with the support of, uh, tons of sponsors and partners. And whole thing was redesigned in twenty twelve, uh, was brought to life for about five years, tested in San Francisco. And then actually was funded just back in twenty eighteen, so we're really fortunate to be, uh, now seeing it grow around the country. Uh, new program, so you saw it in action, what's a little bit unique here is we wanna support every aspect of, uh, building and funding this program and then making it successful. Uh, so there's a whole lot of fun here and we'll be sure to follow up with these materials for review, uh, but it's really a holistic initiative that's half, uh, funding and building. The free outdoor gym, which is the, the fitness court, then the second half is services that make it successful. So everything from ongoing programming opportunities, promotional opportunities to really engage the community. Uh, so, so obviously the big, you know, anchor of this program is the outdoor fitness court, uh, as Jim mentioned, it works for adults of all ages and ability levels. Uh, it's been redesigned completely to be a modern work of art and, uh, lasts a long time in any climate, we know it gets a little cold up there. Uh, so that's super important, it's gonna function for small groups, large groups, individuals, a ton of different ways to use it. And it's actually pictured here near the Golden Gate Bridge in San Francisco. Um, just to highlight what the program includes, so again, for the twenty-first century, we want this to be really comprehensive with the, the organization, cities we work with. And so it's everything from strategic planning to pick the right sites, uh, funding, which we'll talk about, and then digital tools that activate this. And then each year, uh, the program itself has a, a number of pre, training programs that build community outside. And obviously, one of the biggest questions these days is, you know, being outside and how this might support that, so we've been a little bit lucky. Where the seven zones that add up to a full-body workout out here work well for physical distancing, uh, so at least in the near term and the long term. Uh, keeping folks healthy outdoors should be well-supported with the initiative. You can see here, the size is about thirty-eight by thirty-eight feet, so you folks can imagine half a tennis court is the, uh, size. And so the campaign itself, we've been fortunate, as mentioned, to be funded the last couple of years, uh, we've built foundational partnerships all across the country. A number of organizations are starting to get involved once again, and you can see a few dots up there in the corner up in the northeast. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about what's happening, but a, a key thing for us is building foundational relationships in regions across the country to begin to grow the initiative. And so, uh, good example of that, upstate New York is actually Rochester, where one of the first fitness courts has been built in the state. Uh, this one was made possible, of course, by MVP Healthcare, you can see here, so there's a lot of different ways to fund this program, and that's where our expertise. Uh, we try to align with leadership who sees value in this sort of initiative and then work together over about a twelfth-month process as required. To, uh, get it in the ground. And so I think with where we're at today, we wanted to help provide an update, uh, to everybody, and again, support Jim in the process here. Uh, we've now been able to secure funding, so we've got three phases to building the partnership, and we really are a partnership-based organization. So we look to work with communities who are making wellness a priority, um, obviously Granite Knowles is a great example of that. Uh, the infrastructure you guys are putting in is, is top-notch, we think it'd be an excellent fit, uh, so that sort of takes care of the, the priority in site selection. Of course, it's important that, uh, the full council, board, everybody gets involved and is excited about this too. Um, funding becomes pretty important next, and we know really important, uh, this year, of course, probably the most important, so we'll talk about that. Um, we have now gotten through our grant approval process, so that's pretty good news. Um, we have now gotten through our grant approval process, so that's pretty good news. So we've set aside initially $30,000, uh, that's through our non-binding process for the town, uh, that's gonna be available. And then the last piece of the puzzle is just aligning on timing. Uh, so we're looking mostly at our 2021 campaign, and obviously these dates shift around on an annual basis, and this is how we help, uh, fund the program. So Jim, you may wanna jump in a little bit here, but I, I think we should have the plan showing up for the site. And again, this was well-supported by our grant committee. Uh, we think it would make an excellent addition with the loop pathway and the other amenities that have gone into the park. Uh, we really see this as, you know, potentially a leading site, um, in the region, so we're quite excited about the opportunity to support it. I've got maybe a couple more slides and then maybe, you know, Jim, I'll toss it over to you for just a second here and talk about the site.
Absolutely.
So really the funding, of course, that's a big question. Uh, here's the funding requirements for this initiative on the left side. So we need $130,000 total plus installation uh, to get the program in the ground. Uh, that's totally turnkey, so it covers everything from the system itself to the floor, to the bolts, to all the services, which are pretty important. And then our national grant fund from partners and sponsors provides $30,000, which has now been approved, uh, for the community, which is again, good news. We've got 100,000 left to go, plus, uh, installation, which can happen locally, and that's really the piece that comes together from our support in a lot of different ways. So if we dive into the details, I know Jim, this was important to have, uh, available as a reference. Uh, you can see the breakdown of the funding and, and what this covers. So everything from the actual system to the digital tools, promotional elements, you name it. And then we've got the funding noted here that's been awarded of $30,000, taking the system itself and the funding down to 100,000. Um, there's great customization that comes standard. We might decide a sponsor gets involved, we wanna do a mural wall, that's certainly available. And then you can see the range of requirements on installing this program. Uh, so a lot of times it'll get donated, we'll bring out a local team who could put in the concrete pad. Sometimes it gets bid out, and you can see some of the numbers there, uh, sort of a 30 to $60,000 range if it gets bid out. And so, uh, last piece here is just the, the specifications, and, um, again, the, the key here, we'll provide this information for you guys, is all the services are included, so our expertise is in helping build the funding. Uh, usually there's a little bit of matching funding that, that might come from the town. We decide what was appropriate, and then we work on a strategic plan to invite, uh, local and regional partners as appropriate to support this thing. Uh, start to put the funding together. So that's really it. That's the run-through we wanted to provide, and, um, you know, I'll, I'll bop back to a couple more slides here to the plan, but we certainly really appreciate the time and uh, the consideration for the partnership, and, uh, I think we're excited to support and see if we can, uh, build this and bring it to Granite Knolls.
Uh, Trent, I sent you an email, uh, with the current location photo. I don't know if you can get that up. Um, Matt, in regards to, uh, some of the signage on the side of this, uh, would we need special permission from the state to do that?
Uh, that's a good question. I'd have to check.
Because I...
I don't know off the top of my head. Adam, I don't know if you would know?
I, uh, I... Was there signage on it? I mean, I don't really notice it.
For corporate sponsors.
Here's the existing location where we'd wanna put it, by the way, guys.
Yep. No, it's a perfect spot. We, I was up there with you and Matt on Friday testing the lights for the 9/11 ceremony, um, for, for Friday night, but I, yeah, it's a perfect spot, without a doubt.
So, so in our conversations with Trent and Alex and the rest of his team, we've kinda made it clear with, when COVID hit, we kinda lost our steam with the funding and stuff like that. Um, and they've been very helpful in trying to find other sources of funding, but like Jim was just saying, we need, we need, the reason why we're bringing it to the town board now is, number one, we're talking about the DEP regulations with the SWIPS and...
Right.
Where the water is gonna go, because this will have to have an actual, uh...
Concrete slab.
Concrete slab there. So we were gonna have to tie that into everything else that we're talking about at the location. And then, um, what was the other one? Pick it up from there, Jim. I forgot. I lost my train. Sorry.
Well, I, also other funding, uh, we'd probably have to go back to the commission, uh, and try and get some funding from TNA, and then s- see, we'll see what else we had left to cover the difference.
Right. And like Jim said, the sponsorship. So we didn't know where we could, what we could do after we've gone through the other, um, regulations with the sponsorships on the fences, if that...
We'd have to check.
Similar to this, yep.
Yep, we'd have to check. Um...
Who's gonna own this?
Th- this would be ours. I would, Trent, that's correct?
Absolutely, yep.
The town of Yorktowns?
Correct.
And then, and then what about maintenance? Is that also gonna fall to the town?
Yes. They help us with maintenance, correct? Isn't that c- correct, Trent?
Yes, sir. Yeah, fortunately very low maintenance, but that would be an annual town responsibility.
Right. So we'd, we'd be worried, we'd be focused on, we'd be responsible for maintenance of the site, maintenance of the equipment, things of that nature?
You got it, yep. Typically a yearly inspection, little touch-up on the powder coating. It's got almost no moving parts, so it's designed to be out there for a couple decades uh, under pretty heavy usage conditions, so it'll hold up pretty nice for you guys.
Trent, is there a warranty on these, uh, pieces?
Yeah, absolutely. They're actually made just south, um, down in Alabama, so pretty proud of the quality. You guys would be impressed if it lands out there. Trent, with the construction in, uh, the city of Mount Vernon? Yeah, you know what? Mount Vernon is, uh, actually working on their concrete pad, uh, now, so they're actually in the process, uh, of getting the installation done, so they're, uh, moving through the process. I think depending on how quickly we're able to generate some excitement in the region for this or potentially get it approved. Uh, you guys would either, in either case, really be one of the leading organizations involved. And then New York City, there's a couple of programs now for larger cities, and so we've started the long, uh, you know, multi-tiered process of, uh, supporting New York City to begin to get involved in the campaign too. So there's some good things happening nearby.
Is there, is there any fees to be charged to the users?
No, no fee.
Actually, no fee.
But then how, how, where are you going to get the money to keep it upgraded? If somebody throws the extra garbage, who is gonna pick it up? Or, uh, it's something, if nothing is permanent, nothing is framed. If a rain doesn't come, flower doesn't go, you gotta put the water, or you gotta put the weed killer, the extra weed. If you don't know, direct the little... You know?
It's a great point, Vishnu. Uh, we do intend on doing CrossFit classes in that location and, and making money, uh, in that nature. But there's no need to use it per se any given day. You happen to be hiking, you wanna do some pull-ups, there would be no charge there. But we do intend on doing classes. Trent, were you gonna say something?
No, I think that's exactly how we typically see it working. So we support certainly revenue development, which is important, uh, for ongoing maintenance and, uh, these programs nationally. Usually it's a mix of free and anytime usage and a few programs that are offered, uh, in partnership with the town or the city. So we definitely support that. The maintenance typically too is just about $500 a year if that, so leaf blower, some staff time to clear off a few leaves in the fall. Um, other than that, you're not gonna need to do too much with it at all.
How much money are you looking for, Jimmy?
Uh, right now, it's, it's about $100,000 we need to, um, we need to come up with. Um, so hopefully we can get a big chunk from, uh, TNA and, uh, and piece together the rest.
Basically, we have to, uh, the town board has to approve the project, and we have to approve the money. Um, and it looks like you're probably gonna be looking somewhere between 130, if I'm not mistaken, Jimmy, and 160 by the time we get the, the installa, you know, the, the local installation done.
That's correct.
The extra hundred, yeah.
Cause, uh, we do have to put that down, so that, that's on our, that's on our backs.
Yeah, yeah.
Um... How many square feet, the whole area? How many, you know, the dimension of the whole, uh...
Trent, Trent is 40 by 40, right?
Yep, yeah, just over 1,000 square feet. So big enough for 35 folks in, uh, normal times and, uh, small enough that it's a pretty compact footprint.
So I, I saw a part of this where there are the classes and the instructors. So is there a special training for these instructors on this, on the specific equipment? Is it something that's, uh, that's pretty much something a normal person you would hire, Jim, would have for a class? What is the specific...
And that's the ambassador training, isn't it?
Yes. There's, there's ambassador training for this specific equipment. Um, I would be willing to take a look at a resume of somebody that does CrossFit as well. Uh, anyone that with CrossFit experience, I believe, could probably step in here and do these classes, but the ambassador program here, we would try and aim for first, uh, to, to run these classes.
Is there any problem with the social issue, uh, distance issue because the coronavirus is not going away? I can tell you that.
That, that, that is correct, and, uh, enough you, uh, Vishnu, you can see the, the video, but yes, they, they showed, uh, that there's six feet of distance between, um, uh, e- each few, uh, pieces of equipment. So you could essentially get seven to, six to seven people, uh, on the court at one time.
Trent, if, uh, th- there's, there's no time limit that we have to have this in by, correct? In words of, we want to wait, wait till next spring to do it. There wouldn't be any, you know, there's not any kind of a grant that's gonna run out or anything like that, right?
Right, yeah. Our program runs on an annual basis, but we start pretty far in advance. So actually, these funding awards run all the way through 2021, so we've got 18 months to, to put it together and make it happen. Typically, it'll happen at about six to eight, uh, 12, just depending on the year. But we really commit, uh, once we award funding to work together to make it happen over a longer period of time.
Because I, 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 I forget, it might've been, uh, Matt Talbert who brought it up. He says, we're, you know, we're in the process right now of, of, uh, uh, solar panels in the parking lot and drainage and DEC and DE, or actually DEP, um, uh, and this would be another impervious surf that we have to worry about for water drainage and so on and so forth. So it's probably gonna be one of those things, probably gonna have to lump all into one, one big plan.
That's, that's exactly why we're bringing it up now, um, because it all ties in. Hey, who knows? This may be another location that we can cover with, with a, uh, solar canopy.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, the only concern that I have, I like the program. I am just concerned about, um, how much money we have, and I don't wanna make a commitment until we talk to Matt and maybe that later. Um, you know, we just knew the state has taken money and have hiked other payments for us, so I love the, I love it as an idea, but, you know, I'm not sure if we got the money.
Yeah, I need to still talk to the commission as well and see, uh, wh- what's available in the, in the trust and agency as well.
Yeah.
Uh, because they, they may have, they may wanna take on some of this, this expense.
Jim, I have a suggestion. If the, if the town board wanting a hurry, everybody should take a $5,000 cut in the salary. How about that, you know? Starting with me?
I, I don't think anyone's gonna go for that, Vishnu.
I think speaking of that, Vishnu.
Uh, we, we did, we were perfectly clear with Trent. When we first started this, things weren't as bad. And then, like I said, COVID hit and we've had multiple conversations and we, you know, we told them we were in dire straits at this point in time, so they're aware of it and willing to work with us, figure it out, whatever we can do, and just keep the wheels...
Certainly back, that's also why, why we wanna talk to Adam and, and see if, uh, we are able to gain some of that additional funding through local sponsors. So if we can get a hospital, if we can get a, a loans for, per se, uh, to sponsor, uh, the back there, uh, that could definitely take a big chunk out of, uh, out of the total nut.
Hospitals are in, in a real bind these days. I don't know if you know that.
It was just an example.
Yeah, community sponsorships, we got you. I, I, conceptually, I think it's great. I, I think it's, it would be a great addition to Granite Knolls. Um, you know, I think we just gotta figure out the financing. I mean, every, it's, it's, uh... I'd love to say yes, I'd love to say yes to all these great things, but, you know, at the end of the day, the state just pulled back $285,000 right out of our pockets. So we just got cognizant of these things, and, you know, thankfully, we have, you know, Trent, you said 18 months, uh, expiration of the grant, so it's not an immediate decision that's needed, and we can spend some time working in conjunction with our Parks Department and the commission to figure out, uh, the financing behind it. And, uh, I think that that's obviously just gonna be the key to this whole thing, is if we're gonna be able to either get the sponsorships, and if not, how much is, is gonna be asked of, uh, of the town and, and what position are we in at that point in time? That's just the reality.
Exactly. No, that's perfect.
Absolutely. We're, we're aware of it.
Yep. But it's, listen, it's a great concept. I'm, I'm, I'm all on board. I think it's fantastic. I love it. I think people up there would really enjoy it. Uh, to your point, whether the, the pickleball or whether there, you know, some of the teams that are coming up, you know, to, to go practice or play, you know, they can, they can, they'd be able to jump on there as well. Um, it's, it's obviously, you know, and, and Jim, we'd have to talk about some sanitation issues, but, uh, you know, I'm sorry, not sanitation, but sanitizing issues, just to make sure that... It's getting... But just to make sure that it, the, the six-feet distance is perfect, but just to make sure that they got some spray down on there as well, so that the next person, you know, is able to use it safely. Uh, so obviously, you know, from a COVID standpoint, I think it, it, it does a good job. Um, uh, so I, again, from my standpoint, I think it just comes down to the finance and, and what do we have available and what do we have to go get?
The state just clawed back, what, $285,000 from us, and then we got an upcharge of an over $100,000 on our retirement, right?
No, that includes the hundred. The state called back five from, uh, aim pa, aim payments to the town, and then they just upped our retirement contribution by $100,000 for next year, so.
Oh, that's awesome.
$185,000 in a week.
That's, so we'll continue to talk to Trent and then see, see if we can get the price down.
Let's just be, I, I can just speak for myself, but I'm definitely interested. I'd love to see it added. It's a gr, be a great addition to what we have there. If you, if you can just be patient with us and, and, and let us, you know, work together and figuring out just the financing of it, I think that's gonna be, that's gonna be the linchpin.
Yep. Makes, makes complete sense, and we're 100% with you. You guys are not alone in this, uh, situation around the country, believe me, so we're extending a lot of the deadlines. There's no binding limit of any kind, all that stuff you'd expect. So yeah, we'd love to work with you guys on it. We'll see if we can make it happen.
Great. And Jim, you're gonna have this in front of the commission on Thursday?
Correct.
Great. Very good.
We will discuss financing options as well.
And then what we'll do on our end, uh, Adam and I will, will go back and try to make a determination about, uh, the, the signage. If that requires state approval like the fencing does, or if we can, if we can just go ahead and do it.
That'd be great, cause that'd save a lot of energy, uh, one way or the other. You know, if, if it's a go, then we'll go full throttle, uh, on finding a sponsor. If, if not, then it kinda kills it right there.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I'm making...
Or we can put in for, uh, legislation.
Or we, yeah, we can put in for legislation too, um, which wouldn't...
Is there any alienation, uh, you know, of the land or...
There'd be no alienation. It'd be ours, Vishnu.
Yep, it's parkland. Great. Trent, thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you all very much. I can stay on.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, Trent.
Trent's gone?
Yeah.
So, I don't, I don't, supervisor, I, I don't know if you had an opportunity to talk about the, uh, the Kubota with the rest of the board?
Uh, we did not have an opportunity to talk about the Kubota, uh, at this point in time. Uh, Tommy, where do we leave off with that?
Um, you know, the, I, I, I left there and I said, you know, it, it seems like a laudable amount of money to not have to put into it to get a new one. Uh, but I think, you know, the more I, I researched it over the weekend, uh, I think I wanna call up there and, and talk to them, because I, I wanna get all the service records on that before we do anything.
We already put in...
I'll, I'll get those for you. Yep. I'll, I'll get those for you and actually wait to get the, uh, budget transfer.
Well, yeah, let, let's just be clear. So the Kubota for the Parks Department is broken down. Uh, it's been, uh, it's been chronically breaking down since 2017. Is that correct, uh, Jim?
Since we, since we bought it.
You bought it in 2017. Um, and so we're trying to make a determination whether to spend the money to fix it.
What's a Kubota?
It's a, it's an ex...
It's a dragon. No, I'm only kidding.
It's a narrow excavator.
Oh.
Yeah, and so we have to make a determination whether we wanna go fix it for roughly 9,098 bucks, something like that.
Correct.
Yeah. Or, or we could, uh, uh, essentially sell it back, uh, and then, and then it would cost us 13, no, I'm sorry, it's 19, 19,000.
19 total.
19 total for the, for a new Kubota. Uh, you know, it is a critical piece of equipment for our Parks Department. Um, but I've asked Councilman Diana, uh, due to his expertise, you know, with, with machines, to take a look and invest some time to, to guide us through this process. There was questions about, uh, a lemon law claim. Um, frankly, uh...
It's passed.
It's passed, but also we had some concerns from some of our park staff about filing a lemon law claim, uh, considering our relationship with some of the dealers that we, uh, do business with. Um, and so again, we're, I asked Councilman Diana to assess the situation and provide some guidance.
Lemon laws are sixty days.
And, you know, if, it, it may be passed, but I, I do believe, I'm, I'm looking at what they wanna give us on a trade-in, um, it's pretty low.
I agree.
Um, and I've also... And, and, and I think that they can ante up here a little bit, um, to be quite frank with you, because let's face it, they knew that this was a problem from day one. So can, I don't know, or, uh, I don't know that much about the lemon law, so I'm gonna defer to you on that, but, um...
It's only a very short window, Tommy. We're way past that one. It's gone.
I mean, that was something that I think was, uh, mad of Commissioner Talbert. Um, I think that was something that was requested previously. Uh, but at this point, I tend to agree. Not, not only do I agree that the timeframe's passed, but I, I think that considering the concerns raised by the staff, uh, who continue to do business with the dealer. Um, you know, we don't want to put them in a precarious situation moving forward. So again, Councilman Diana, relying on his
I, I do understand all that and I'm going to have to talk with them up, up in, uh, the, the, the dealership because, you know, quite frankly, there's a lot of Kubota dealers out there. And, um, uh, you know, they're not willing to play ball with us knowing that this was a situation that we were having with this thing and it was going to go down again. And if we put $9,000 into it again, it's going to go down again in another year, guaranteed.
So you're going to spend nineteen thousand between this year and next year to, when it breaks down again.
If we spent ninety-eight hundred now.
Breaks down, we, you get him.
If we spent ninety-eight hundred dollars right now, we'd have absolutely no warranty with it.
Right.
If we spent
And this has to do with emissions.
There'd be no warranty.
This has to do with the emissions also. And I want to check, I want to check to see what, if you buy a car today, emissions are, are guaranteed. I'm going to use a number. I could be wrong north or south, but about eighty thousand miles for certain things on the emissions. This machine has no hours on it. None. It's like, it's like a brand new baby. Um, but, um, but I, I, I got to work on it. I mean, let me see what I can do.
Thank you. Yeah. Let, let Tom and I work on it and, uh, if I need a budget transfer, I'll, uh, come back before the board.
Yes, you will. Anything else, Mr. Talbert?
Yes, actually I was listening to your conversation before and as you were talking about buildings and I just wanted to remind you that our Parks and Rec Department is working out of two trailers since fourteen years.
I know Matt knows.
Years old, but yeah, I'm well aware of the situation over there. Trust me. I, I don't need an assessment to tell me the situation that our, our rec department is working out of.
Matt, uh, but thank you for, uh, keeping an eye on it. I know you have been.
You know, if we had an old school in Yorktown like Cortland had in its town, it'd be great, but we don't.
Well, we, we're working on some solutions.
On show?
We can hopefully, hopefully they'll come to fruition.
Until it's already out.
All right.
We tried it already with the YCC building.
Oh, please.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
One more to go. I don't know if that, if the presenter's on, but we appreciate it. Commissioner Talbert.
Guys.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Uh, Adam, can you check on Mr. Geller if he's jumping on? Cause I don't see him in the queue. And, uh, I know he's been under the weather, so I just, uh, I hope he's okay. The last, um,
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, just as a point of reference, the last, this is an interesting one. This is a fun one. Um, there's a National Food Truck Association uh, that we were hoping, we were originally planning on hearing from them in August and then, uh, right when the storm hits, we kicked them obviously, uh, because we were dealing with some other situations. Um, and Adam, do you want to try to give a, at this point, you might be able to give a better synopsis than I can? So basically, um, the, what Mr. Geller does is he would provide him with, um, specific location, a location or locations. Um, and he actually organizes food trucks to then, uh, uh, go to those locations. Uh, the town would benefit, um, both from, uh, I believe, a, a fee structure, uh, that directly with the food truck association, uh, as well as with, um, some of the vendors that would be, uh, obviously coming. Um, trucks, as we know, is a growing commodity in a lot of communities. And, you know, we've got one very successful one here, uh, with Chef Rob, uh, that's, uh, always great to see. And, uh, you know, Mr. Geller has a proven track record there across the country. Um, and it, it could be a very interesting proposition for us to hear. Um, you know, again, he presented, he, he made a short presentation to me personally with, uh, Mr. Rodriguez. He's based out of LA, which we all know is based with the food truck capital of the world. Um, so he's got extensive, extensive, uh, experience in this and
Are they the ones doing, uh, the, uh, food truck day in Elmsford?
I don't believe so. Um, I'm not aware if they are. He'd never said that to us. Um, but he, he attracts premium food trucks, you know, to, to those locations. Um, he monitors them. He, he provides a full service, which is, it would be another enhancement for, for the town and our community. Um, you know, I'm always thinking of things and, you know, we'd have to, uh, I'll be, unfortunately Jim and Matt aren't here, but, you know, I'm thinking of things like over at, um, the commuter parking lot off of the Route 202 field where there's no concessions. I mean, I, you know, we, we can pair them and, and schedule them so they specifically overlap with, uh, sporting events and, you know, softball game and, um, whatever it might be. If we want to do our own food truck festival, you know, we can organize that through him and he can, we can tell him where we want it to be and he can go and, and attract high-quality food trucks, uh, to our community. Um, and, and it's unfortunate that he can't give you the full presentation himself. Um, but that was, that's the thinking behind it.
You know, I wanted to do before I left, being the town clerk, because I think that it will, they will do well in Yorktown. Um, um, people, I, I, you know, the only problem now you've got, you've got to change your code and, and
That's something we can do. That's something we can have a conversation.
But I think that, um, for me, you get some of the better chefs who don't want to own a brick and mortar restaurant. They want to own a food truck and you get good food.
Correct. Makes more sense nowadays anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Allison, I have a question. Um, uh, this might, this might be even a, a, a clerk question. Um, I know years ago that the veterans were given, um, preferential spots for hot dog trucks, et cetera. Is, is that still in our code?
Yep. I believe it is because I was just trying to help someone with that same, uh, issue.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if you say preferential. Usually all of the sponsor, good spots are taken up. Diana, jump in here.
I, I think it's state, state owned or county owned.
Only the, oh, the number roads are state and county and only vets can go on those roads.
That, maybe that's what it was. Okay.
It's a statement that veterans get to use any rooted highways. Yes.
Veterans get to use any route. Okay. I, I wasn't sure. I knew there, I knew there was something with the vets. Okay.
So we, we, uh, I do, like I said, I know that he, uh, frankly was ill, um, for quite some time. So we hope he's doing well. Uh, and we have been trying to get him. Um, but so we will reschedule that. With that, we're going to go to resolutions. Uh, we have a resolution from the planning department. Uh, uh, essentially, uh, releasing a $20,000 bond, uh, to construction services LLC, which is for the Nestle Waters location. And then, um, there's a second resolution that was not on the agenda and I apologize. Uh, and it, the following resolve of the supervisors authorized to enter into a regional kitchen agreement with the town of Cortland. For the town of Yorktown, prepare approximately sixty meals per week for homebound seniors for $14.50 per meal. Term of the agreement is October 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2020.
Do we have Kim's email? Kim's, uh, resolution?
I'm sorry?
Give Kim's resolution?
No, that was not him. No, I do not have that tonight. Uh, and then secondly, resolve of the supervisors authorized to enter into a regional kitchen agreement with the town of Cortland for the town of Yorktown prepares approximately sixty meals per week for non-homebound seniors for $4.50 per meal. The term of the agreement is October 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2021. Those are the three resolutions that we have tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carry. Uh, uh, Councilman Roker, you, you, thank you for reminding me. I will make sure that is on next week.
Well, and you have Margaret's. I thought she was going to give them. I thought she said she was going to give them to Diana, which meant more, more.
The only one that I was given, that was, the only one that I was given was the, the, the two for the senior nutrition center.
Okay.
And
I just don't want her to think that we were doing, we were going to do something and
And then the, I'm sorry, there's a third that Adam just reminded me of, which we discussed. Uh, which pertains to the Westchester Ballet Center.
Right, exactly.
Uh, resolve of the supervisors authorized to enter into an amendment of the agreement with Westchester Ballet Center to remove rooms 223 and 228 from the scope of the premises utilized at the Albert A Capelini Community and Cultural Center and reduce the annual fee in the amount of $1,967.91. And
So moved.
Again.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the others we will, uh, put on next week's, maybe we'll make sure are on next week's agenda.
Okay.
How big are those rooms?
No other business before the town?
Really big.
No, I'm thinking, put our parks up there.
No, I think that's not big at all.
No.
Excellent. With no other business for the town, we'll make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Good night, gentlemen and lady.
And have a great night in Yorktown. We'll see everyone on, uh, for the nine eleven ceremonies. Thank you so much.
Good night, y'all.